Gracias por venir. Hoy es el 5 de marzo y es las 9:04. Agradecemos que se vayan a nuestro lugar hoy. Miss Martinez, ¿puede llamarme?
Comisionada Farrow.
Presidente.
Comisionada Bucky.
Presidente.
Comisionada Will.
Presidente.
Comisionada Becky.
Presidente. Gracias. Nuestro siguiente artículo es una devoción inspiradora. Esta oración estará aquí, el señor Fernando Tijeras. Quiero relajar mis comentarios. Gracias, estimados, amados. Gracias y quiero agradecer especialmente a la comisionada Candice O'Donnell por ofrecer la invitación para dar esta oración en nombre de nuestro condado y en nombre de todo el trabajo que ustedes hacen. Soy David Fernández de Taos y soy residente de la área aquí durante varios años. Y en un tiempo largo, recuerdo que todos los demás están aquí también. Y estamos aquí con el mejor interés de nuestro condado, nuestro querido condado, y ahora mismo en los lujos, los lagos y los ríos y todas estas cosas que hacen nuestro lugar tan especial y las buenas personas aquí que lo hacen. Y gracias, así como el manu y el viejo camino tradicional de nuestra área. Vamos adelante y haremos esto de nuestra manera. Buenos días, buenos días, Dios mío, Dios mío, Dios nuestro. En nombre de Dios, Dios mío, Dios mío, Dios santo.
Amén.
Amén. Dios, Dios amoroso y providencial. Gracias por esta gloriosa y bendecida mañana donde la gente buena y la gente de Taos, y los comisioneros y todos los que aman este país de Dios aquí en este país, en nuestro país, en nuestro país, estamos reunidos para levantar y resolver y llevar nuestro camino hacia adelante aquí. Especialmente quiero dedicar estos breves momentos en memoria de mi amigo y estoy seguro de que es un amigo de muchos aquí. Un servicio público del condado de Taos, también, que fue un estimado James Durán, que se fue. Y lo he mencionado porque es uno de muchos que durante muchos años y décadas ha trabajado en nombre del condado de Taos. Hay muchos más y, por supuesto, todos estos están llevados en nuestras mentes y en nuestros corazones y en nuestras memorias también. Hay mucho que hacer aquí, pero simplemente oramos, Dios, que por tu poder y por tu gracia, por tu misericordia y por tu sabiduría que has impartido a nosotros, todos juntos siendo guiados hasta un punto por los comisioneros y los comisioneros guiados hasta un punto por nosotros, el pueblo de esta área. Todas las cosas que son especiales para este lugar siempre pueden ser levantadas. Pero hay el ambiente, los ayeres y los negocios, los negocios del condado, la economía y demás pueden todos ser cuidados. Muchos se cuidan, Dios. La cosa esencial es que no importa lo que hagamos, por diálogo y todo, que todos se basen en la buena voluntad entre nosotros y hacia el otro entre nosotros todos. Eso es la clave y la cosa crucial. Dios, dale tu luz a nuestros esfuerzos para resolver diferencias, si alguna existen, entre nosotros. Deja que la calma y la razón clara sea el guión para todos los que están aquí hoy y todos los tiempos que nos han costado, todos los días que hemos pasado hacia adelante en nombre de nuestro condado. Si son difíciles, si son difíciles entre sí, déjanlos ser suaves hasta un punto que podamos entender mejor de dónde viene la próxima persona. Y la sobornación y la cosa overarching, como has impartido a nosotros, Dios, es que mantenemos siempre lo más alto y lo más grande en mente, que es el mejoramiento para el pueblo, ya sea aquellos que viven aquí siempre o sean los inmigrantes entre nosotros o sean cuestiones y a menudo conflictivas, agua y demás, que todas estas cosas las miramos como seres sabios y como seres más altos listos para ver lo que está ante nosotros en la mesa y en una forma madura y en una forma espiritual también. Dios, simplemente una vez más pido que escuches nuestra oración esta mañana y que el fuego que has lanzado en este mundo para ponerlo en movimiento como en la creación, ese mismo fuego levante en nuestros corazones para calentar hacia el otro en esta gloriosa y bendecida día. Nosotros siempre te damos gracias y lo hacemos. Y así terminamos con esto, mientras levantamos en gracias. Al sol, ojos al cielo, echo la humildad me muestro. Rezaré por mi consuelo, la oración de Dios nuestro. A Dios nuestro, que estás en el cielo, santificado y alabado sea tu nombre. Que en tu espíritu estés, Dios, con estado en la tierra como el cielo. Que en Dios nuestro, cada día damos gloria, señor, y perdona nuestras pecados así como nosotros perdonamos a los pecadores. No nos dejes salir de la tracción más fría, nos incumbran los dolores. Nuestro padre, que está en el cielo, alabá su nombre, su reino llegará, su obra será hecha en el aire, en la tierra. Que nos sostenga nuestro huevo, que nos bendiga nuestro huevo. Que nos perdone a los que nos han maltratado y que nos dé la razón para la tentación que tenemos. Que la bendición de nuestros creadores sea altísima. Desciende sobre los sufrimientos hoy y siempre. Y esa bendición recibamos todos juntos, en nombre de Dios, del Espíritu Santo. Gracias.
Un certificado de la ONU, de Estados Unidos de América y de la República por la cual se encuentra una nación bajo Dios invisible, digna y justa para todos.
Aprobado la agenda, los comisioneros, ¿cómo se puede hacer esto? ¿Hay algo que añadir o necesite en la agenda?
Comisionada Bucky. Gracias, presidente. Me gustaría aprobar la agenda antes de la modificación. Esa sería la discusión 16B sobre el uso del fondo de impuestos de la libras. Me gustaría que fuera parte de la presentación de Taos County. Estoy en la discusión sobre 16B y la discusión de 16B. Sería parte de la discusión sobre la posibilidad de decisión sobre el presupuesto de Taos County. Así que haré ese movimiento.
Una segunda.
Segunda.
¿Algo más, comisioneros? ¿En la agenda que se presentó, que ha cambiado? Si no, Miss Martinez, ¿puede llamarme?
Comisionada Bucky.
Sí.
Comisionada Bucky.
Sí.
Comisionada Thunberg.
Sí.
Comisionada Bucky.
Sí. El siguiente artículo es el seis. Esto es una reconocimiento. Tenemos tres temas en este disco, comisioneros. Uno es el IVA, una presentación. Un certificado de apreciación a la comisionada Mary Mosquadenas, ex comisionada, durante 20 años de servicio. ¿Tenemos al comisionado Behill aquí o quién va a ser? Quién va a estar aquí presentando. También tenemos una reconocimiento de Amanda Chalheta, estudiante de la Academia de Derechos de México y certificado de telecomunicación el 22 de febrero de este año de Donnie Martinez. Y luego también tenemos el IVC, el nuevo contratado de Taos County para marzo de 2019.
Gracias, presidente. Comisionada Behill, quiero expresar las disculpas a la comisionada Mosquadenas. No pudo escuchar su audiencia en un asunto privado. Este es el discurso que escribió. Así que está leyendo el discurso. Buen día, señor presidente, comisioneros, oficiales, miembros del público. Hoy he venido a reconocer a la comisionada Mosquadenas por su servicio y compromiso con el condado de Taos y su papel como comisionada comandante de la Comisión de Planificación. Su certificado de apreciación. Los miembros de la Comisión de Planificación, junto con los miembros del Consejo de Directivos fueron nombrados por el Consejo de Directivos para servir un periodo de mandato comenzado en enero y terminado en diciembre. Como comisionada comandante, la comisionada Mosquadenas, a través de sus acciones, ha ayudado en el desarrollo, el crecimiento del condado de Taos revisando y aprobando permisos de desarrollo, como permisos de especialidad, permisos de desarrollo mayor, variaciones, subdivisiones, aplicaciones. La comisionada Mosquadenas fue nombrada como comisionada comandante de la Comisión de Planificación por varios comisioneros del condado, con su primer nombramiento remontante al tiempo que el condado de Taos fue dividido en tres distritos comisionales. Con su primer nombramiento, fue hecho por la comisionada comandante de la Comisión de Distrito 3, Manuel Pabuto Trivia, la comisionada Mosquadenas se mudó de la comunidad de Nueva York a San Francisco para servir en la Comisión de Planificación. Y como comisionada comandante, no recibió ningún tipo de forma de compensación. El 31 de diciembre de 2018, la comisionada Mosquadenas cumplió su 20º año de servicio en la Comisión de Planificación del condado, donde, debido al aumento de los distritos comisionales de cinco a cinco, la comisionada Mosquadenas representó la comisionada comandante de Distrito 5, Donalds Distrito, en lugar de Distrito 3. La comisionada Mosquadenas, en nombre de la comisionada comandante de la Comisión de Planificación de Taos County, sus compañeros en la Comisión de Planificación, el Consejo de Directivos, el personal del condado de Taos, y los ciudadanos de Taos County, les agradezco por su servicio y compromiso a los ciudadanos de Taos County. Y este es el certificado que le damos a la comisionada Mosquadenas. Y dice: "Mientras el gobierno de Taos County, el Consejo de Directivos del condado haya reconocido su selfish contribución y compromiso como comisionada comandante de Taos County y a los ciudadanos de Taos County y nuestras comunidades, donamos el especial reconocimiento por haber servido en la Comisión de Planificación durante más de 20 años. Su contribución y servicios son grandemente apreciados. Les agradezco por su gran trabajo." Gracias, presidente.
Casi me he llorado, pero creo que no es así. Pero quiero agradecer a los comisioneros, incluidos Abel, Padre, Pablo, Trugio, Becky, Párras y Virgil Martinez, fueron los primeros comisioneros en el consejo en ese momento. Y continúo en servir porque amo mi comunidad, amo el condado de Taos, amo a la gente. Y me gustaría siempre estar consciente de que lo que hago es para el beneficio de todos. Me gustaría agradecer a la Comisión de Planificación y de Zoning. Son las mejores personas con las que trabajar. Son dedicadas y comprometidas. Y no podría haber personas mejores ayudando al condado de Taos. También mis compañeros en la comisión. He tenido muchos. Muchos han muerto y muchos siguen trabajando, pero todos han sido buenas personas. Hemos trabajado juntos bien y eso es lo que se necesita, es trabajar juntos como unidad en lugar de separación porque todos somos uno y todos tenemos que trabajar para el beneficio de todo el condado o del estado porque eso es lo que hace que sea importante y especial, único. Así que quiero agradecerles, el Consejo de Directivos ahora, por también su servicio dedicado. Quiero agradecer a Brandon y quiero a Leandro y a Rudy. No sé quién más está aquí en la Comisión de Planificación, pero sé que hay muchas personas que trabajan duro y comprometidas y así, en este momento, digo, si hay una oportunidad de darle la razón, por favor denle la razón. Gracias.
Comisionada Bucky. Mary, solo quiero agradecerles por mantener mi comisión de Gene Sanchez en línea porque ese tipo de gente, no sé cómo alguien puede mantener la línea o limpiar nada si ustedes hicieron un buen trabajo. Me voy a olvidar de ustedes mucho desde los días de mi trabajo. Trabajamos en las cosas y siempre han sido apoyados y ustedes se preocupan por el condado de Taos. Mary, les agradezco.
Gracias, Gene.
Gracias, presidente. Mary, estuviste en la Comisión de Planificación mucho antes de que fuese comandante del condado y siempre fue un placer trabajar con usted. Usted era alegre y dignifico y sabio y todas esas cosas que sólo hicieron que fueras un gran miembro de esa Comisión de Planificación.
Gracias, condado. Gracias.
Comisionada Bucky.
Gracias, comisionada Mosquadenas. Ustedes han estado aquí durante todo. ¿Ha pasado un tiempo? ¿Cuántos años? ¿24?
20 años.
Gracias por su servicio.
Pero me gustaría decirle que, usted sabe, las personas que son dedicadas no se preocupan por ponerle un extra servicio. Estaba pensando en los muchos tipos en el invierno y yo volví a casa y estaba durmiendo porque el nevado era muy malo, el clima era muy malo. Así que esos son los tipos que hacemos porque nos importamos y nos agradecemos a Dios por el trabajo de todos en el condado de Taos. Gracias. Dios los bendiga.
Comisionada Mosquadenas, la nueva de nuestro grupo. Hace 20 años que estaba pensando en hacer las disculpas, pero ¿cómo depende de la comisión y el presidente? No sé. No era como los años, pero... Comisionada Mosquadenas, creo que lo que usted y su grupo han hecho en la Comisión de Planificación ha servido su propósito y espero que continúe avanzando de la forma en que ustedes fundamentalmente han puesto en marcha para que las cosas puedan avanzar un poco más fácilmente, como usted dijo, porque usted, con su perspectiva, continúa manteniendo al condado de Taos como tradicional y como auténtico como hemos sido, asegurándose de que las cosas se sigan bajo nuestras tradiciones y nuestra asunción, avanzando, con un camino para que sepamos cómo era el condado de Taos históricamente y continuará siendo. Así que gracias por sus servicios. Han hecho mucho por nosotros.
Gracias. Y me gustaría decir que mi esposo no podría estar aquí, pero tengo a mi abuela, mi gran abuela, aquí conmigo y es una honor tenerlo aquí. Pero también tengo familiares extendidos. Amo a las personas y trabajo con ellas, como Rudy, que es del planificación y de zoning, Frances, Cordova y todos los condados, cada condado. David Fernández, él sirvió como comisionada cuando mi esposo fue manager del condado. Y no sé quién más. Darren Fernández, del Partido Demócrata. He estado involucrado durante, no sé cuántos años. Así que como dije cuando fui nombrado como miembro del año de la Comisión de Planificación, he dado 100 años de servicio, así que seré 100 también.
Deberíamos tomar una foto contigo. Creo que los otros serán reconocidos. Tendrás que compartir la comisión, pero ustedes tienen la comisión por sí mismos. Podemos tomar una foto.
Claro.
No, no, no.
Va a ser un gran político.
Comisioneros, ¿por favor se queden aquí? Tenemos una presentación y queremos introducir a nuestros nuevos empleados. Así que, ¿quién va a continuar?
Buen día, presidente y comisioneros. Comisionado Behill. Sí, solo quiero reconocer a Amanda J. Archeletta. Ella graduó de la academia hace un mes y medio. Amanda es residente de Taos durante mucho tiempo. Ahora está certificada como telecomunicadora. Está certificada en nuestro programa EMD también. Esta es una de las... solo quiero reconocer a mi personal. Ella es una de las que está ahí salvando la vida cuando la llamada de la policía viene para todos aquí y sus familias. Una cosa que quiero agregar, la clase de Amanda fue una de las clases académicas más altas que tuvieron en probablemente las cinco o diez clases. Así que solo quería reconocer a Amanda y no olvidarla. Gracias.
Ella es realmente buena persona.
Comisionada Thunberg, ¿va a venir? ¿Introducimos a nuestros nuevos empleados de noviembre?
En realidad...
Febrero.
Febrero, marzo. Me gustaría reconocer a nuestros nuevos empleados que están en el condado de Taos. En realidad tenemos algunos individuos aquí en la detención, los asesinos y las comunicaciones que se van a introducir hoy. Así que empecemos con nuestro departamento de asesinos. Cheryl Ascony ha sido actualmente contratada como nuestra administradora de oficinas. Ha estado en el asunto durante hasta cuatro años. Ha sido asesina, sin embargo. Realmente recientemente contrataron a ella como nuestra administradora de oficinas. Sí, recientemente contrataron a Cheryl Coca. No, Shirley Coca, nuestra técnica de profesor. Ella recientemente se contrataron dos meses atrás. Estoy emocionada. Nuestro próximo contratado fue Ben Sanchez. Él también es un técnico de asesor que recientemente contrataron. Estoy emocionada de tenerlo aquí. Nuestro próximo contratado es August Betzer. Él es un cadet de detención reciente que trabajará con nosotros. Estamos buscando muchos otros asesinos. Nuestro próximo contratado es Jaclyn Abbott. Ella es nuestra nueva entrenadora de comunicaciones. Y Dominic se va a ir.
Así que solo un rápido informe, presidente y comisioneros. Jaclyn es un californiano nativo. Recientemente se mudó aquí. Estaba buscando su carrera y solo la contrataron. Y quiero reconocer a Rebecca Rodriguez, que ha estado desplegada durante unos ocho años. Ella es nuestra oficina de entrenamiento, nuestra coordinadora de entrenamiento. Y Jaclyn estará en el trabajo de entrenamiento con Rebecca durante los próximos tres meses hasta que se retire de la telecomunicación. Solo quiero reconocerla también. Gracias.
Estamos en el set. Tenemos el set de ciudadanos que están preocupados y los que están preocupados para hablar. Este es el tiempo de cinco minutos en el que los comisioneros no se actúen en acción o podemos dirigir a dos personal a seguir. Si quieren, pueden venir al podium, decir su nombre y nuestro comisionado Farrow estará tomando decisiones. ¿Alguien de los ciudadanos que están preocupados?
Voy a aprovechar esta oportunidad para agradecerles una vez más. No quiero dejarlos de la comisión, pero una vez más, gracias por estar hoy y espero que tengan una reunión muy productiva y buena en nombre de nuestro condado de Taos. Y estoy contento de reunir los sentimientos de la gente aquí de que estamos preocupados por las necesidades de nuestra gente que vive aquí. Y, comisionada Fernández, aprecio sus comentarios en relación con la tradicional fundación de nuestra área y eso es como la fundación, la fundación de todo lo demás que hacemos. Así que una vez más, gracias y agradezco a Dios por estar hoy y los bendiga. Y no se vaya hoy en mi hora y tenga un buen día.
Presidente, el comisionado del condado, mi nombre es Alfred Coroa y estoy aquí para hablar en nombre de apoyo a la resolución de la agenda de líder en la reunión. Agradezco la oportunidad de venir a ustedes hoy. ¿Qué ironico es que el primer amendment de la Constitución es lo que permite a los ciudadanos la oportunidad de ejercer nuestra libertad de expresión y petición de no obstante? Esto nos permite reunirnos como estamos hoy y comunionar libremente para apoyar nuestro segundo amendment. Debemos ser open, tener una discusión honesta y respeto mutuo. Debemos depender de datos, hechos, razón y lógica. Recuerden en la historia nuestro gran país que tienen las siguientes palabras de la Constitución que ha sido tan debatida: "Un bien regulado y necesario para la seguridad de un estado libre el derecho de la gente a mantenerse en su lugar no será infringido." Una frase que conjura tanto debate y emoción. Los escritores de la Constitución eran claros en sus intenciones cuando incluyeron la frase: "No será infringido." Las pistas en cuestión no son las que poseen las personas antes de usted, detrás de mí. Lo primero, necesitamos ver los datos, necesitamos ver las pistas que están siendo usadas probablemente por muchas de las personas que están en el edificio a la distancia de aquí. Es el problema, es de lo que necesitamos ver y es donde deberíamos centrarnos nuestra atención. La policía sabe quiénes son estas personas. La policía continuamente las atrapa, las encierra y debido a las leyes weak y regulaciones se liberan de la comunidad en la que ustedes viven. Si hubiera habido una solución de leyes como Chicago, Washington, ECU y el estado de California serían los lugares más seguros de nuestra nación. En el contrario, son algunos de los lugares más peligrosos en nuestro país. Y tienen leyes de pistas estrictas ahora mismo. Así que le pregunto, ¿por qué implementar leyes que cuando hacen criminales a personas como yo y muchos de los miembros del público aquí hoy nos parece que esto ayudaría? of the members of the audience here today, do we feel this could help curtail crime and stop crime? I would be the first in line if I thought that the laws that are being presented would really stop crime and protect innocent lives. These laws don't do that. These laws overreach, they overstep, and they infringe on people's rights. There's... As a citizen, we have a right for due process, and due process is a must. Many of these laws that are being enacted, if and when they do reach the Supreme Court, will probably be overturned because of infringements of our rights, not just our second amendment right, but also if you look at the fourth and the fifth amendment. Those are very important, and those are part of our founding, what our country was founded on. I'd like to say that I do not support HB eighty-three and Senate Bill two oh one that are going before the state government, but I do support the grassroots efforts that are being made by myself and many of my colleagues here today. I'm gonna keep my comments short because I completely have a tendency of being long-winded. So, I didn't even give you the first of five pages that I had, but I do appreciate you looking at the facts, considering the people that are before you today, and making the correct decision. Thank you.
Commissioner Fendel wanted me to put her on the phone to Chief of this unit, and he would make that call to the executive committee in one second. I love my fellow Commissioners. You guys are probably on here with the same... Commissioner Fendel, we are about citizens' concerns.
Okay, so, Commissioners, my name is Joe Wells, and I'm a property owner, resident here in Taos County. I'm here to urge you to oppose the sheriff's resolution, primarily because I think it has inaccurate information, particularly with reference to Senate Bill eight. Senate Bill eight was approved last night by the House. It's passed both the Senate and the House, and it's underway in the Governor's desk. It's gonna be signed into law. She promised to sign it into law. And what it does is require individual private sales of guns to undergo a background check. It's a completely sensible and reasonable piece of legislation. It doesn't affect anybody's constitutional rights or second amendment rights at home or selling guns. It just requires that a fee be paid. The fee was capped by Senate amendment at thirty-five dollars or less, and a Senate amendment was also approved that exempted family members. The resolution that you had before you from the sheriff mentions doesn't mention those changes, particularly in terms of the family member part. And so, if you can oppose it, I'd urge you to at least take out references to Senate Bill eight if you can amend the resolution. And I would say, I... This has been a kind of ongoing discussion, and while I don't necessarily agree with the sheriff on his position or a lot of the people in the room, I think the sentiment in the county is reflected by the fact that the governor received eighty-one percent, over eighty-one percent of the vote, Taos County voters, and she ran promising to support and put into effect this kind of legislation, as did the members of the legislature that have already approved it. I have great respect for the law enforcement. I have great respect for the sheriff, and I appreciate the fact that Olympic County, where this sheriff said he would enforce all that laws, not just certain laws or ones that he agreed with. That said, I think it's a new day in New Mexico, and the constitution says well-regulated in the second amendment, and this is just one example of sensible regulations that I hope you don't go on record being against. Thank you for your time.
Fellow Commissioners, my name is Tom Hurd, and I've been a resident in Taos County since January twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-five. And the only thing I can add to what's already been said, this comes from Winston Churchill. A nation that forgets its past has no future. You gotta remember that. I am for this resolution of Chief Hurd, our sheriff, and I think it should pass. Thank you.
Commissioner, Sheriff, thank you for taking all the time to see this. I am proud to be in a... Oh, sorry, being example is not good. I'm proud to be a American. I pledge allegiance to one flag, one God, one country. I'd like to thank all the members supporting the constitutional, our God given rights, and fighting to keep us all free. Thank you. Our founding lawyers created several documents in response to their own experience living under a federal school. These documents will become certain rules to ensure that the American people would have the best chance not only to survive, but to thrive and prosper by limiting the power of civilians. These documents acknowledge that we humans have certain rights, life and virtue of happiness. They were not worth it to say the government could or should determine who is deserving of those rights. The right to life means exactly what it says. Every human being has a inherent right to life. This right is protected by law. The right to liberty means that individuals will have the ability to act following his or her own will, and alternatively achieve their potential, thus the right to feel without control. The pursuit of happiness is a fundamental right to free, pursue joy, and live life in a way that makes you happy, as long as it does not violate another's rights. My rights end where your rights begin, and vice versa. I respect the individual's right to choose natural firearm, but they must respect my choice too for a firearm. I suspect most of the people in this room are a firearm, and are not considered a threat to anyone, nor have they broken any laws. The right to life ensures if a life is intentionally endangered, we have the lawful right to defend it. And liberty ensures we have the freedom to determine our own destiny without interference from others. The second amendment puts the people the means and the ability to defend those rights against single individuals, parents, or a corrupt government intended to violate them. The words "shall not infringed" are very clear and concise, and the definition cannot be changed without changing the constitution itself. These gun control laws that we introduce are unconstitutional and will only affect impacted law-abiding citizens, to think otherwise would be foolish. Sheriff and Commissioners, your oaths require me to uphold the laws of the land, not unconst- constitutional laws. And the last time I checked, the U.S. Constitution has not been rewritten. Full failures and hurdles can uphold the United States Constitution as it is the supreme law of the land. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Julie Sando. I hadn't planned to speak today, but I would like to ask you to oppose Sheriff Progress' resolution. The people who are in support of these gun regulations, such as myself, have nothing against the second amendment. We have friends who have guns. My brother's a hunter. And we are just simply trying to decrease the access of criminals to guns. And that's all these laws are doing. There's nothing in the bill that passed the House last night that the governor will sign that opposes the second amendment. Nothing opposes the second amendment in HB eight and as we date. It is simply an attempt to decrease the availability, the access of criminals to these guns. About twenty states have passed similar resolutions, similar laws, and those states have seen about a twenty-five percent decrease in gun homicides and other gun deaths. And that has huge savings of laws. We worry about the kids in our schools who are having to go through active shooter drills, even in kindergarten. Many of them are frightened by this. If we can do something to decrease the gun violence in our state and in our country without infringing on second amendment rights, I think we should do it. It is the wise and the safe thing to do to protect our children and our communities. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Tricher. I'm a resident of Taos County. You cannot deny that declaration of gun sanctuaries sets up conflicts between federal, state, and local laws. It remains to see how such resolutions will be enforced, as state laws take precedent over local and county laws. Our sheriff was not elected to unilaterally decide what is constitutional and what is not. That is a judicial function. Let's fight the scourge of gun violence in this community and channel the energy in this room to promote gun safety and reduce school shootings in this country before it comes to Taos County. Thank you.
I'm not here to discuss the Latin part. I'm here to take my share of the remaining unsold book. I've been acting in South Park for almost forty years, thirty to forty years. Few people up there know. You played it.
Cheater.
Cheater. All I'm here to discuss is policy changes in the building on Sonic Park. My concern is, you guys went ahead and put a new construction stand and stuff like that, which I understand should improve the build, and it's a lot higher. My problem is now is this gentleman is trying to remove these, raise the prices on the property there to use the builds. When we do throw tournaments, it's for donations to the Little League, to me. I don't know whether people do, but I give donations to the Little League and other state tournaments for other people to join and go on. So, all I'm saying is that if he proposes to raise the prices on us, we'd like to know what it's gonna be, because we're in the dark right now as the league. And that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kristy Holden. I'm a resident of the county. I spoke before you at your last meeting where the sheriff decided to pull the resolution on the second amendment sanctuary. Since then, I had an opportunity to work with the sheriff to try to craft a document that could become advisory to the legislature. I share some of his concerns. However, when I last spoke before you, I reminded you that the New Mexico State Constitution reserves all rights regarding second amendment and firearms possession and ownership to the state. It specifically says, "No municipality or county shall regulate in any way an incident at the right to keep in their arms." This clause was reaffirmed by the New Mexico State Supreme Court in two thousand and two. In their explanation of that affirmation, they said, "We don't want this state to be a checkerboard of gun laws. That is unfair to gun owners. We want one law for the whole state." Further, I reminded you that indemnification for the scope of your duties could be adversely affected. Should you act beyond the scope of your duties by passing a rule, any rule regarding firearms ownership, that is not the purview of the counties. Should our sheriff or any other official identified by state law act beyond the scope of their duties, they would similarly become personally liable for their actions. I like Sheriff Hurd, I don't want that to happen to him or his family or any of his officers. Now, specific to the resolution, and I apologize for getting into this, but I will have to leave soon. On the resolution that is before you today, the second paragraph is an opinion, it is not fact. The fourth paragraph is also an opinion, not fact. Colorado has indeed passed similar laws as of last Friday. The next paragraph, dealing with inheritance of firearms, is also an opinion, it is not yet a fact. Many of the languaging of the bills that have been passed by our legislature will need to be tested. That is our legal process. We need time to let that happen. Last, as we concluded the hearing, wait, it was a month ago, I believe that it was Commissioner Blankenhard who said, "These are judicial issues." None of this has changed since our last meeting. I respect the decision before you. It is complex. I respect the people here who are concerned about your gun rights. Let us do this by the law. We cannot use the law to override the law. It doesn't work that way in the country. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Robert Wolfes. Disclaimer, I don't represent the county council or the county police department. I've been a policeman with the county police department thirty years now. Problem is, criminals don't follow laws. That's why they're criminals. They can enact every law, restricting every gun law, and it won't work because they will break the law. They will obtain guns. They will steal guns. All this law does is make potential criminals out of lawless. Recently, I had an incident where a gentleman was involved in a shooting. He shot a car. Guy had previous history, had a fourth degree felony on his record. However, a deal with the DA's office allowed him to, well, carry a firearm. Does that make any sense? Deals are being made, and the criminals are being allowed to carry firearms. Does it make any sense? Constitution is clear. We have to follow the laws of the constitution as supreme. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Myers. I am currently serving in the United States Army Reserve. I'm not representing them, obviously. I took an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, and in the Constitution of the United States of America, the second amendment is a second amendment for a reason. Without the second amendment, we would not have any of the other amendments. Look, in England, they took away all gun rights. They're already getting tax on the internet, on the TV. What they say, they're getting those rights in England. Also, in England, people are against that, and they're starting to regulate those, knives. It's not weapons that are the problems, it's guns. Guns are just a tool that, if you know how to use it properly, it's just a tool. You can use it for hunting, to defend yourself, for sport. And it's, like I said, it's not the gun that's the problem, it's what's in... It's what's in people's hearts that's the problem. People wanna be violent, they can be violent. The Boston City bombings, they used fertilizer. People are gonna go on shooting, stabbing campaigns. People are gonna use cars to run into people. People use hammers, people use screwdrivers, people even crazy whatever, where there's absolutely no guns, people still get killed on a daily basis. It's not guns or any inherent object that's following, it's people's hearts. That's how I see it.
My name is Marty Michael, and this is the Udall Act. The gun bill is the Udall Act. I saw them on their sit-down in Congress. And I just want to let you know that in the sixties, there was two minority leaders that were fighting for the minorities. And at that time, Stuart Udall was the Secretary of the Department of Interior, and one of them was assassinated and the other one was framed. And I just want to let you know that. Okay?
My name is Michael Fry. I live here in Taos County. Good morning, Commissioners here today, ladies and gentlemen. A lot of people have come up and talked about the Second Amendment, and a lot of people have talked about how they're not improving the Second Amendment. I look at these laws, and I've read everyone, Ken Redneck from Missouri, we're kind of gun prone there. So we moved out of here five years ago to beautiful Taos County, and we've had a lot of reeducation since I've been here with not only just people, but animals and stuff like that. I look at these laws today, and I say that these are not successful in any way. And I do agree with the sheriff on this point. We're all here, AID law enforcement has the right to both protect people and the Constitution. That is their, that's what we put them in office for. I don't like the way that you've written because they take away due process. They've already had these, enacted the United States, they've already had problems. My biggest concern is Bill eighty-three, the red flag law. I do understand the fact that we need to be able to catch people who are having violations before they cause these problems, but we have federal laws already in place to take care of this. We don't need more laws on top of laws that are already in place to have law enforcement do their jobs. They have their, they have the laws already. So we're looking at placing more laws upon people that are legally and by law able to carry their firearms. And I'll tell you, a lot of times, today are their first responders, a lot of my friends are here today, will say the same thing. When there's something going down, especially out in western Taos County, it takes law enforcement forty-five minutes to an hour and a half, I've been through this, to get them out there. We're our only first responders when we live out there, because there's nobody coming. And to sit there and start putting laws like this in the action is going to, again, make criminals out of people that are law-abiding citizens. The red flag law, as I said, it's rare of due process. They've had problems with this law already in other states. Expartee is being done by people who are angry and want to get back at the other person. That means an officer walks in and somebody told them that I was a threat to either them or myself, walked into my house, take everything I have without due process. I had not been before a judge, I had been not charged with a crime of any kind, yet they could walk in and take everything I have. That, to me, is a crime itself and should not ever be something that we have taken away from us. Our Constitution gives us the right to due process. These, this law here, especially this law, takes that away. There is no due process. And an officer takes his life in his hands, and so does any of the people that have guns when a police officer has to go and take care of something like this. It is, it is going to be that people already shot and killed because an officer showed up at their door at four, five in the morning, holding their weapon like they would be because they don't know who's at their door, and yet the police officer shot them and killed them. This is not right. We have to get, we have to have due process so that when people do... One of the things I noticed in here was that the people that make these expartees don't even have to give their names, while judicial report didn't. There's no, no way to reconcile that. There is no way for that person to be charged with a crime for doing a judicial report because they were anonymous. Thank you. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Alex Shoenfeld. My name is Jason Beadres. My diplomatic speaking is awful, so thanks for bearing with me. Thanks to Commissioners for giving everyone here the chance to come up and speak on the Citizens Forum. I'm here in support of Sheriff O'Griff's amendments that he's pushing through, and anyone else that's in support of that, I would like you to get up here and maybe tell us that our Commissioners know what your position is. The, the problem with these laws is that they infringe on the rights to due process. At the beginning of this meeting, we said the Pledge of Allegiance, you know, liberty and justice for all. When you infringe on due process, that is not liberty or justice for all. There's, the last time I looked, there was twenty-six counties out of the thirty-three in New Mexico that have passed similar things to what Sheriff O'Griff is doing. And so this isn't just some wild thing that we're doing in Taos. It's, it's actually the majority of what the counties are doing in our state. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gil Tofoya. I'm a resident here in Taos County. I want to thank our veterans, first of all. Couple of things we did here this morning. First thing was said a prayer and the pledge of allegiance. And so I'm here to support O'Griff in that we still have our rights. And when I look at it from a kid's standpoint as to where we're headed with this, is, again, to support our, our Constitution right. And all of us here have children or children of somebody, so, so please keep that, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kristen Mulvey. I don't have a prepared statement, but I've lived in Taos for forty-five years, and I'm here to wish you to protect Taos and to look after the citizens. And the best way to do that is to make sure that when someone wants to own a gun, there's a background check on it. And I don't see any reason why there's an urgency to buy your gun that doesn't allow someone to take an extra however long it takes to have a background check. And I feel that the people in this room who feel threatened, nobody wants to take your guns away. Nobody wants to take your guns away. That's not why we're here. And we just want to make sure that our families are safe. And I think that another important factor for you folks up in the Commission to remember is, I heard about this meeting at nine thirty last night. I think there's been a big network of people who have done supporters, who are gun, who are Second Amendment advocates, sanctuary, county sanctuary, county sanctuary advocates, who've known about this meeting for a much longer time than most of the Taos residents. And if this is really to be considered, you need to remember, someone else spoke to us back, that the voice here is not representative of Taos County, it's representative of people who are very avid gun, gun rights supporters. And I support their right to own a gun. I don't support the right of someone who is unstable or violent. Thank you.
My name is Marjorie Lucky, and I'm a physician, and I am a resident of Taos County. And I want to address specific reasons why I do not think that the Commissioners should pass this resolution in its current form. And that is because this resolution, as it is written, contains a lot of factual errors which indicate that whoever drafted this resolution either had not read the bills that it is addressing in the resolution, or it may have been drafted in part by people who really wanted to turn this into a political issue, to make it about Second Amendment rights, and to create fear and hostility and divide of community. So I just want to point out a few of those factual errors. In the second whereas of this resolution, the only resolution and legislation that's being promoted by every town for gun safety, which is specifically mentioned, is HB eight, which requires background checks on gun purchases. That is all that this bill requires. In no, in no way reflects the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens, as is claimed in the resolution. In the third whereas, it is stated that the proposed legislation would criminalize nearly all private firearm sales between family members. And then the fifth whereas, it says that this legislation would severely limit and restrict the transfer of firearms from parents to their children. The bill was amended in mid-February on the Senate floor to exempt family members from, from this bill, and it would, it would exempt them, family members, from background checks. And one other claim is that the fees would be restrictive. In fact, the fees were capped to thirty-five dollars for the background check. So in addition to the inaccuracies in this, there are a couple of flawed arguments that are raised here. The difficulty with enforcement is not against, is not an argument for not having a law on the book. Look at driving under the influence. This is extremely difficult to enforce, but these laws sometimes prevent tragedies, and they allow for punishment if the law is broken. And I would ask the Commission whether or not it's actually appropriate, as requested in this resolution, for the county to actually attempt to limit the state's right to pass legislation that is not already passed by the federal government. That's what this resolution is asking you to do. That, in fact, is against state's rights. So I think it would be embarrassing to our county for this resolution to be passed without fact-checking and without having legal review to make sure that everything in the resolution is accurate before, before we put Taos County's name on it. Thank you.
Terry Infinades. I will first speak on behalf of the Democratic Party and then on behalf of myself. And first, I'd like to again recognize Mary Moscadenas for her work with the county and her work with everything she's done with the party for many years. It's an honor to meet her today and to watch her receive that award. Thank you very much. So, now, to clarify where the Democratic Party stands on this, I'd first remind everyone that we all support Jerry O'Griff. Taos Democrats went to the mass knocking on the doors. We made over ten thousand phone calls knocked on thousands of doors in Taos County to push for a straight ticket to help reelect our sheriff, whom all of you are here supporting today. So we support him, right? There's, there's no question about the work that we've done to support getting Jerry reelected because we appreciate the work that he's done. Do we disagree with him sometimes? Sure. I disagree with my family members sometimes. They disagree with me. Sometimes it occurs in public. But hopefully, at the end of the day, we still really appreciate and respect each other. Now, secondly, Democrats, Taos Democrats, up and down, we respect the Second Amendment. It is, you know, it's been said that the Second Amendment is there to protect the first, and I think most of us actually really agree. And I'm going to piss off some of the Democrats in the room, and I'm going to say that I agree with that sentiment too. In fact, probably during the course of my next few minutes, I'm going to get all of you upset. Because what I'm trying to do is find some sort of common ground, some sort of common sense, so that, you know, even though in the midst of heated legislation and debate, we can remember that at the end of the day, we all share this community, and we all have to face each other in the stores, right? So we are not opposed to the Second Amendment. We understand that the court has ruled in D.C. versus Heller that there is a constitutional right for a person to own firearms. So that means that even if someone wanted to take a gun, which I don't want to do, no Democrat wants to do, there's no way that can happen because the Constitution has already said that you have that right to own a gun, right? And I own weapons too. I own a firearm, I own a handgun, I own a couple rifles. I'm saving up money so I can go and buy another three oh eight, brand new three oh eight from Fred. So I am not opposed to guns, right? I'm also not opposed to sensible legislation that does not infringe upon an individual's right to carry a firearm. And, you know, the courts upheld that there are some sensible types of legislation. And if I go to Fred's place and I want a right handgun, I have to fill out a piece of paper. Now, right now, the only burden some about, burden something about that for me would be if I was right-handed, but fortunately, I'm left-handed, so it's not too much of an issue for me to have to sign that paperwork, right? And in order for Fred to sell that gun illegally, he has to have an FFL from the ATF. So, you know, the courts have ruled that there are some sensible and constitutional restrictions on gun sales. The courts have also ruled that you have a constitutional right to do that. And I think that all that the state of New Mexico is trying to do is close a couple of loopholes that still would allow, and, and, but not restrict a person's right to own a firearm. I would even venture to say that this resolution really isn't necessary, given the fact that there's already a constitutionally established right for an individual to own firearms, and that there are constitutionally established certain restrictions on purchasing firearms. So maybe, you know, we should just consider abandoning this whole thing altogether because the protections already exist. And if we're really concerned about the government coming in and taking personal property, which I think is one of the biggest arguments in this room, rather than focus on, you know, the unrealistic threat of government coming in and taking a firearm, which logically and logistically cannot be done, let's focus on the real threat that is happening right now to private property, which is federal government under the Trump administration coming in and trying to take people's private property, private property. Could happen to you or anyone else to build a pinch of boardwalk. That's what we should be opposing if we're talking about the government taking private property. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners and Taos County residents. My name is Monica Cruz Alzor. I am a fourth-generation resident of Taos County. I'm here on behalf of speaking about putting the horse before the cart. What is our issue? Why are we having crimes? Mental health and drugs. Nobody is speaking about that. Government is not funding that. I have never seen a news media commentate that a sane-minded person committed that crime with that firearm. Why are we not addressing that issue? That is putting the horse before the cart. Until we grasp mental issue... Until we grasp mental issue, drugs, we are not going to decrease our crime rate in the whole nation, in the world. So our issue here in Taos County is mental health. We do not address the mental health. I sat on the board for Taos County. We do not fund it financially. We put it as the wicked stepchild. We put it in the backburners. That's who commits the crimes with your firearms and the drugs. We have such a high, high crime of drugs between our children, our adults, and that goes back to the drug cartels that are crossing our borders. And I believe in putting up that wall in certain areas. It's not feasible in all areas, but I have friends in southern New Mexico. I have ranchers down there that have lost livestock. I have one that his nephew went to school with my daughter in Las Cruces. He stopped and helped one of those immigrants. He stopped thinking it was a medical issue, and the person shot him point-blank, left him there, took his cellphone. It took three days for that family to find that person. So we need to put the cart first, I'm sorry, a horse first. We need to start looking at the drug control and the mental health before we start imposing more laws on gun control. We have them already, they have not shown to do any difference. It's the mental health and the drugs. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Gary Kaitz, Chairman of the Republican Party here in Taos County. And I have a few little thoughts on the Republican order here. We're full support of the Resolution 2018-13. We think that the Commission needs to stand up to the state here for the citizens' rights of Taos County. I think firstly, and I think the Republican feels the same way, that the control legislature is going overboard on taking our rights away. They're looking at taking gun rights away, and they want to take our personal rights away, uh, excuse me, um, sorry, that's not right. Our right to self-determination as to whether we can handle firearms or not, how we can defend ourselves. And that we need to send this resolution to the state telling them that we want our firearms here, and we want our due process rights. We don't want the state to take them away from us. We feel that the due process rights are one of the great parts of this country that keep it together, because we all have equal opportunity under the law to be in front of a judge to defend ourselves when someone makes a claim against us. Couple of these bills will stop that from happening. They allow law enforcement, without being in front of a judge, to come into our house and remove our guns and ammunition just on the bottom and the word of another person. Granted, we do need these laws for mentally ill people, but we need to have a judge determine that, not just a sheriff. And it shouldn't be placed upon the sheriff to determine that. As we've said before, the sheriff is not a determination of constitutional law. What they're doing here, the state is trying to go around our constitutional rights. And I think it's time that Taos County stand up and say we are in support of our constitutional rights, and that we do not support the state's attempt to take them away from us. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Adams. My family's been in this county a long time. I just want to make the last meeting. I want to create a scenario for you, and this is a true-life scenario that happened to me. As most of the people in this room that are involved in agriculture know and understand, it's calving season right now. What that means for the people in the room that don't know what that means is that we're making more flat-weighted calves. Does that work? So it's a tough time. It's a tough time. It's a stressful time. It's a time when we don't get a lot of sleep. And the number-one concern that we have is predators. Many calves are susceptible to predators. People can argue that point. My biggest concern, coyotes and dogs. Dogs that are left unattended. Coyotes that run within our, and I'm not far from here, that run within the town. Lots that have been almost domesticated in some sense. I carry a rifle in my truck for that reason, because I don't want my $800 or $900 calf getting mauled. I had an altercation with a neighbor about a year ago. This thing's been going on a while. He accused me of having a weapon in my truck because of him, when in reality, that weapon was in my truck for a completely different purpose. Under these new laws, that man can accuse me of threatening him with a weapon and prompt an illegal search and seizure of my property, my guns, with no accountability. This is wrong. This is wrong. Our Constitution provides the right to keep and bear arms, with the exception of criminals. Some 29 counties in this state has approved this same resolution. Lord knows, Jerry Hohriff and I have not always met eye to eye. I think a lot of people know that. But I support him 100% in this action. He is our elected law official. He is the only elected law official in this county. Therefore, he carries the highest amount of power in law enforcement in our county. It's our job as citizens to back him in that. Under our Constitution, he has the ability to deputize any one of us if he sees the face of the bill. If I don't have any guns, I don't know how I'm going to help you. I'm not a criminal. My family's not a criminal. The people that are across the way here that was rare for serving, they're criminals. I don't know how they get their guns. I know my wife, who I tried to get here to come and talk to you, because she's got a unique perspective on this. She's not her thing. She's been involved in law enforcement most of her adult life. Grand County Sheriff's Department in Texas, she ran this bill to it. She was a probation and parole officer. And I asked her a simple question this morning. Of all the people that you had to go into their homes that were on probation, that you found weapons in their homes, were any of them obtained legally or owned legally? And she sat there for a minute, she shook her head, and she said, "Not that I can remember." We confiscated a lot of stolen guns and a lot of drug paraphernalia, a lot of drugs. And Monica, I'm so glad you brought that up, because that is our underlying problem. One of the reasons that I want my guns in my home is because of the rash break-ins that happen in this community. Our sheriff's department, they're going to get there when they can, but they're busy and they're short-staffed. I need to be able to protect my family. I need to be able to protect my livestock. I've never been convicted of a felony. I've never violated any gun laws. I own my father's guns. I own my grandfather's guns. And I intend to pass those guns on to my folks, some of which I already have. This state does not have the right to tell me I can't do that. These laws are being created to make certain people feel good. Truth is, it doesn't work. It just makes them go on, and they just feel better. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Jerry Hohriff. In order to try to do this on, this is a discussion and action item today on 11 B. I'm overwhelmed by the support in this room for this resolution. And soon, we will be getting to it. There'll be a public comments section in. So I just want to ask a couple of things. Everybody, step inside, please. Step inside. And I want everybody in this room that supports this resolution as it is written and is read, please stand up with me right now. Commissioners, I'll see you on item 11 B. Thank you. We are still under citizens' concerns, so we'll kind of... I think I have a minute. I live here in town. I wasn't going to speak today, but yeah, there's a lot of misinformation floating around out here, and a lot of things that people don't seem to understand. Let's talk about the NICS system for a second. NICS was implemented under the auspices, not as a way to control the Second Amendment, but because of the United States Congress Act. Because most guns are produced in one state and sold elsewhere from Latin nations. So it's the ICC that dictates that NICS be used. For a person-to-person transfer, for people in this room, there's no United States Congress Act. So there's no legitimate grounds for using NICS to perform a background check. And I know what I'm talking about, I don't have that belt. I do this for a living. Another issue, one of our early speakers today brought up the fact that the state capped a fee for conducting these NICS checks at $35. Okay? Would he be in favor, would anybody in this room be in favor of assessing the $35 fee every time you wanted to vote? Every time you wanted to stand in front of a government commission and speak? Every time you wanted to vote in church? Every time you wanted a jury trial? Do we assess a fee for those as well? The Second Amendment has the same strength as the First, the Third, the Fifth, the Tenth, and any other amendment. Yet it gets hammered more and more and more than anybody would even consider addressing infringements on the First, or the Third, or the Fifth, or any other. It's got the same weight. I listened to the debates in the State Senate last night. There was so much misinformation, and I'm going to call them outright lies being presented, that, yeah, after a lot, it's kind of disgusting. You know, I've heard Justice Scalia misquoted so many times in these debates. You know, he brought up, you know, reasonable gun control measures, and said that, you know, there are times when they can be imposed. What gets left out of his quote over and over again is the word "commercial." He was talking about commercial transactions. He specifically said "commercial transaction," not person-to-person transfers, business So people are misrepresenting what he said. Now, he did say something, though, one time in a lecture that I found to be really helpful. He said, "If you're going to study the Constitution, there's one thing that is really important to remember. Anytime you see the word 'shall,' that is a command. It's not a request. It's not a good idea. It is a command." The Second Amendment states the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. That is a command. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak out. My name is Brian Shields, and I've been in the community for 20 years now. I wasn't going to speak today, but this is an issue obviously close to all of our hearts. When I first came to Taos, I was a very young man, and I learned all about how to survive here in this community, and I bought myself some guns. And I learned how to hunt and fish and support myself in terms of eating. And it was hard to make a living in those days, and it was really necessary to have guns to do that, to be able to survive. I made that up pretty fast, after, once I was able to really provide for myself and my family. I also realized that guns were very, very dangerous, and all sorts of things can happen very fast. I wasn't willing to have a gun in my house because of that. And I have had very close friends who lost, well, one specifically who lost his son because of a mishap in the family. It's unavoidable, but there are some things that are avoidable. And what we must do is to try and avoid those things as much as possible. And if it requires a background check, I don't see what the problem is. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't see what the problem is. When the Second Amendment was passed, what were the guns that were there then? Are we now going to say everybody has a right to bear arms to the point of having machine guns, to the point of having a nuclear bomb? What are we talking about? When we talk about public, you know, our health and our human health, we have to be really cognizant of the fact that we have responsibility not only for ourselves, but for our neighbors as well. So I'm just saying, everybody has a right to them, and of course, nothing's going to change whether you pass the resolution or not. But there are a lot of things that are being done that are leading to really serious problems. And one of them is our president right now. And if you look at it, and the rise of hatred that's being spread in this country, there are probably people in this room right now who don't know me, but probably hate me. So I'm just saying, hate and guns don't go well together. And right now, this country is being ruled by hate, and it's time to turn that around. Thank you.
Commissioners, good morning. My name is Steve Mieda, and I want to thank everybody for showing up to talk about something that I'm passionate about. However, I'm going to ask you for something. How do you please understand how we have allowed our state legislators to bring us all here today? A criminal commits a criminal act victimizing all of us, law-abiding citizens. Their answer is to impose laws that in my eyes, will victimize us. They impose laws that we're going to follow. I don't understand it. Criminals are criminals because they don't follow the law. They, we allowed this to happen. We're affecting all the law-abiding citizens in the county, in the state. Now, talking about background checks, I challenge anyone here to show me a drug dealer that during a drug transaction, while being stolen firearms, is going to stop your drug transaction to do a background check. I don't understand that people allowed our legislators to bring us here today. And speaking of which, I would assume in the audience, I think this resolution, it doesn't pass a law, but it sends a message. pass a law, but it sends a message. A message that people are now starting to have a voice. And it's pretty sad that our legislators can't be here to hear that voice, to speak for us, because that's their job.
Hello, my name is Wendy Van Nebs. My husband spoke just a little while ago. I am a federal firearms licensee and resident of Taos County and Town of Taos. One point that was not brought up earlier that I'd like to address, in Senate Bill 8, which was passed by the House last night, the state will require me, as a federal firearms licensee, to conduct a person-to-person background check for anyone who comes into my office. The federal government, under the administration of the ATF, gives me wide latitude in who I transfer a firearm to. I am not required by law to transfer a firearm to anyone. You could come in my office, you could fill out a form 4473, you could pass a background check, and I could turn around and say, "You know what? This is over, I'm not doing this transaction." They allow this because we're the ones closest to the sale. If we have a bad vibe about someone, we're allowed to discontinue the sale and they leave without a firearm. Under the Senate Bill 8 that has been passed by the House last night and is going to the governor's desk, the state does not give me that latitude. They tell me, "I must do this." Now, I've done transfers that I felt kind of odd about, and I've gone back later and looked at these people, looked at their social media, and did a little investigative work on them, and said, "You know what? I'm never transferring another firearm to you again. You're not doing anything specifically illegal, but what I'm seeing in your content makes me very uncomfortable." There was a reason why I felt uncomfortable doing that transfer. I do not appreciate the idea that the state can make me use my federal license to do something that even the federal government won't make me do.
Hi, my name's Rachel Penn. It's really hard to speak in here. I know I am outnumbered politically in this room, and there's a lot of large men who have clients in this room, so it's very scary, yet very loud. That's how I feel about it. I respect everyone's law-abiding citizens' right to have guns, but I'm also a teacher and a person who's had to get a restraining order against somebody. And I understand domestic violence issues, and I would like to make sure that we stay protected and that someone who is shown to be a danger to one's family or loved ones, that we can do something about that. Basically, the only thing I want to say, standing in front of you, I also know that Taos County voted 81% in favor of the governor, and I'm gonna address this to Romero, because I believe I'm one of her constituents. I believe that this resolution, that the sheriff wants to pass, while I respect the sheriff greatly and voted for him and support him, I don't believe that this resolution has overwhelming support in Taos County. I think in this room today it does, but overall, I think it's politically not popular, and I won't vote for anybody else, anyone again, who supports this measure. I just want to let you know that there's probably a lot of people in Taos County who feel the same way.
Hi, my name's Mike Torres. I'm in favor of Hope's resolution. What we can all admit today is this has nothing to do with Democrat, Republican, Trump, Hillary Clinton. There's many Democrats in here that own firearms, there's many Republicans in here that own firearms, there's many people that don't toe the political line, and a lot of people are coming here and saying 81% of Taos voting for Michelle LaGrigione, which, in my opinion, I know a lot of people that are in favor of recreational marijuana, and they're in favor of the Second Amendment. So a lot of people that I know voted for Michelle LaGrigione because they're in favor of recreational marijuana. Like I said before, this has nothing to do with Democrat, Republican. People here that showed up today represent Taos. You know, we hold this dear in our hearts, and, you know, I'm a multi-generational, generation resident, and I feel like our constitutional rights are being sat down with this HB 38, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Yes, sir.
Ellen, my name's Joey Sova, so if you know me, I'm a clinical social worker. I am in support of this sheriff Hope's resolution, and one thing I want to state, and I've been listening to the different people who've come in here and spoken, and I respect everyone's opinion, however, you know, I come from a position of, again like the last gentleman just said, multi-generation. I grew up here, my family's grew up here, and, you know, many generations of our folks. And, you know, what I'm sick and tired of, though, is the folks that come in later trying to change our way of life. This really has to do a lot with our right to bear arms, to be able to hunt, to transfer weapons to our children that come up behind us, you know? And as long as they are sane folks and they're not doing anything wrong, they're not criminals, I can't see why we wouldn't do that. Our Constitution protects us in that. So for people to come in here and say they're scared of manning guns and that kind of stuff, that's just ludicrous, you know? These are good people in here, they're not criminals. And I usually take that offensive for somebody to actually come up here and say that. So anyway, as Taos said, I urge your support for this resolution. We need to protect ourselves, and we really need to maybe point to the state and support the Constitution of the United States and the Second Amendment, Senator.
Anyone else? Given none, I avoid closed citizens' comments. It is 10:41. We do have Commissioner Farrow.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would entertain a motion to the Commission at this time to move item 11B to the current Order of Business, submitting the agenda. All these people have finished speaking, all their comments of question are mine. I'm sure they're here to hear about Taos there, maybe they can stay afterwards, and I make my entertainment motion to amend the agenda.
I'll second that motion if you include a five-minute break.
That's enough of that. I'll admit my motion was a five-minute break, as you want.
For Housekeeping, Commissioner Farrow, we want to move that up to current order of business. So there's a motion and a second, so then the agenda is presented with a five-minute break. Ms. Martinez, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Chair Winkler.
Yes, we also have Vice Chair Donald Arnold.
Vice Chair Donald.
Vice Chair Donald is asking if you want a five-minute break. Just hold, I'm gonna teach you a music so we don't hear you. Mr. Chairman, motion, come now, back in two intervals. Motion, maybe do I hear a second? Second. Second, Ms. Martinez, please call a roll.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Commissioner Farrow, yes.
Commissioner Farrow. Vice Chair Donald. Chair Winkler.
Yes. Next item is 11B. Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Farrow.
I make a motion that we pass Resolution 2019-13 with some amendments and some clerical changes, which I would prefer to show on a screen so everybody can see. So you need to hear my changes before I seek a second. Can I go downstairs and make my presentation?
Yes, Commissioner Farrow.
And then with my motion, consideration of some further comments from the Commission prior to the vote.
Yes, add to my motion.
Serious. No, you guys see my [inaudible]. Because of the changes, I gotta speak loud enough for Candace to hear, because she's sick, but everybody can follow my thinking. If you look here, what, in yellow here, I scratched out, including those among family members, that was already amended in the bill, it's no longer in the bill, so it's not there. So take that out, so then we don't need the other whereas it says, "Proposed legislation may severely limit or restrict transfer of firearms from parents to their children or grandchildren." That's no longer there. So let's take that out. Then I'm asking that we add the following to whereas. Whereas is, "Express concern that the New Mexico Legislature cannot enact any new laws that reduce the penalty upon conviction from that which another crime can repeat charge and try," followed by whereas, "The county supports individual rights as granted by the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of New Mexico, and that all persons have protection from unlawful searches, and all persons accused have the right to due process." And, Commissioners, a reason for the last one has to do expressly with Mr. Adams' story. The law was written to do one thing, to protect, like, the domestic violence person and things like that, but the scenario that John gave us is exactly what's flawed in this, so that's a reason for the last. So I ask Commissioners, please, second, with discussion regarding my motion.
Unfortunately, the motion with the amendments to the Resolution Number 2019-13, deleting some of that language and adding two additional whereas. Commissioner, I ask for a second. I'll discuss, I'll have a second. So there's a motion and a second, and discussion is open.
Okay, I have two parts in my discussion that I requested, so I would like to, after, I want to make some statements, hear from fellow Commissioners, and then I have one final statement prior to the vote, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Farrow.
Okay, first I read to everyone here, it's called a supremacy clause. I learned this when I was in the government class. I never thought I would use it, but here we go. I'll read just part of it to you. Supremacy Clause of the United States Constitution, Article 6, Clause 2 establishes that the Constitution of federal law may pursuant to and treaties made under its authority constitute supreme law of the land. It provides that state courts are bound by the supreme law. In the case of conflict between federal and state law, federal law must be implied. Even state constitutions are subordinate to federal law. That's a supremacy clause that we are bound to. Now, this resolution does not allow the sheriff to pick and choose laws. He understood that was something, that's one of the main reasons we adopted the law. Monica Wilder said it thus. "We're spending all of our time dealing with this, and the real issue is something that we're still not tackling, we're still not getting the funding." Commissioner Leganar has a great idea to start working on some stuff, we don't have the money to do that, we're spending time on this. These laws actually attack the legal. This is one thing that's been made very clear to me, and it does not attack the illegal. It was told to us time and time again, about the people that are over there on the other side of the complex are not the ones that this will do, they'll still throw the doing. Joey Sova said it perfectly, you know, these are things that we, in this community, have grown up around our entire lives. I have legally bought 17 firearms in my life. The one that I bought from Fred is now in possession of my son. Thank God that's still legal. That's a tradition. My first .33 was one that my dad gave me, and I still have. Nobody was at the Roundhouse last night, I guess, when this was done, it was done late night. What bothers me, and Darian, you know, I respect everything you said, but why are all these amendments given at the last minute and no one knows about them? When these amendments come in that 10:30 at night or something like that and no one's seen them, how do we know to comment? How do we know when the hearings are gonna happen? I'm sorry, I'm really upset with this stuff. I wish all of these people were down in Santa Fe to speak against House Bill 6, which is raising a half a billion dollars of tax money out of every one of you in this room. I'm angry about how things are being done. Not one wants to be in doubt about how things are being done, Mr. Chairman, and I have one final statement that I would like to read at the end of this debate.
Page 114, discussion, Commissioner, Commissioner Farrow.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Farrow. I support your amendments to this resolution, and I also support the Second Amendment. I don't really exercise that right myself, I just grew up with it, but I've been here 40 years, got lots of friends who do, absolutely respect the Second Amendment and the right to bear arms. But I also have a big concern about people who have a history of violence or instability getting guns. And of course, this ties into what we've all been talking about, with drugs and various substance abuses and mental health issues, you know? So many times in our society, we've seen it, you know? We've seen somebody go off, and then you read about it, and you go, "Oh my heavens, why, how did that person get a gun?" And, you know, there's lots of different reasons, and there's, you know, like everybody has said, criminals don't necessarily abide by the law, and people will get guns, regardless of what we do, but we have to make every effort possible to keep guns out of the hands of people who have unstable and violent histories. And the only way we've come up with is background checks. I know they're not perfect, but SB 8, whichever one it is, I mean, that's the whole point, you know? It's just trying to close loopholes, sales over the internet, gun shows, anything that seeks to close loopholes and gives us a better chance of protecting ourselves and having people get guns who shouldn't, I have to support. You know, and I know it's a pain in the pain, but it's not a complete and terrible restriction on your rights to have guns. We need to have good background checks. I can't support the resolution in its current form because it opposes laws that are doing the best they can to provide additional safeguards through background checks. No laws are perfect, I've never seen one that doesn't have problems. We pass ordinances, they're never perfect. If there's unconstitutional aspects to this law, it will absolutely be challenged by the society, of course. I can't support that.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrow. Commissioner Farrow? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I would like to hear from our attorney, have him shed as much light as he possibly can on Resolution Number 2019-13 that's been proposed, as well as the one that has been proposed by the sheriff. There's two on my table, and so one that Randy gave to me earlier, and one that is here from our sheriff. So I would like to look at those comparisons and see which one will protect Taos County in order to vote on it.
Mr. Sheriff, Commissioners, just my personal comment, I've been applied on the wall because I can't enter into debates such as this and state my own opinion, but I couldn't help but reflect that we've had a marvelous exercise of our first amendment discussing the second. First Amendment discussing the Second, and everybody did that exactly like our Constitution intended. The, for a resolution such as this, we all know that we can't change the laws that are passed in Santa Fe or in Washington. Our representatives are elected for that purpose. But what a resolution does, it isn't a law, it is the sentiment of this board on a particular issue, whatever that issue may be. So if this board passes a resolution, it doesn't bind the county to any action. I actually have a problem with the version of this bill that dealt with sanctuary counties for the reason that it put the power of the courts and judges and the legislature in the sheriff, which isn't our system of justice, and it would cause all kinds of issues with everybody interpreting the law differently and enforcing it differently. So the version that is before you, the sheriff's opere passed, I took the liberty to make a few edits on it, and the edits that Commissioner Fambro did, I think, cover the most significant issues. The background checks for family transfers, I just saw no practical way, even if it was a good idea, no practical way to work with that, and I think it would have only caused problems, even if it was found to be an appropriate piece of legislation, and my point two that I gave to my son would have been a problem, and that just doesn't make much sense. But as the House, and I think, I believe it's House Bill eight that just got passed by the Senate. I couldn't get Senate Bill eight passed by the House. It shows what I know. But I, the last version I saw had some of the amendments, but not all of them, and I do want to underline Commissioner Fambro's frustration. It is difficult because we don't, aren't even sure what we're dealing with today for this resolution. Bottom line, I've talked enough, you guys have talked enough, I think all the issues are on the table. The Commission has the authority to pass a resolution if they wish to. It isn't because they're not taking a law that's contrary to the state. On the difference between the bills, Commissioner Romero, I believe the amendments that Commissioner Fambro proposed took away the inaccuracies as I saw them, and so I didn't want you to pass something that was not true. And legally speaking, the resolution as amended is a fair statement for the county to make about what's pending with the legislature.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if Commissioner Fambro could get around those changes again?
Okay, eliminate the including family members because that was dropped out of the bill, so in the second whereas, I mean, the third whereas would be after the dash, and I would also like to just eliminate the next whereas, because I talked about the same thing too after that, whereas proposed legislation may severely limit or restrict transfer of firearms from parents to their children or grandchildren. And adding to the Attorney's Resolution that was submitted to all of us earlier, adding whereas, whereas it expresses concern that the New Mexico Legislature cannot enact any new laws that reduce the penalty upon conviction from which another crime can already be charged and tried, and the second one being whereas the county supports individual rights as granted by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Mexico, and that all persons have protection under unlawful searches, and persons accused have the right to due process of law. And that's the one that I referenced. I understand Commissioner Blankenhart's idea, and it's a great idea, but the other loophole that loophole fixer created is the scenario that John Adams gives. It's also the scenario of Jerry Holter gets a hunting to be, and I don't get a hunting to be, and I'm pissed because he's going hunting to my favorite place, and I don't get to go. I can wage a threat against him on Thursday, and Steve Mietta's gonna come and take his weapons, and now I just take Jerry Holter and not go out there. Not that I thought about doing that.
Further discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think there are enough changes that were mentioned by Commissioner Fambro with regards to this resolution. I'm wondering if, Mr. Chairman, in order for all of us to completely understand the resolution, the changes that you're proposing, did you craft this yourself, Commissioner Fambro, you had staff do it?
No, I gave basis of Taus County Resolution 2019-13 to Sheriff Holger, and he changed some stuff, added a little bit to it, so that was part of original.
So somewhere in the county complex, this resolution exists in a computer? Did we make those changes, take ten minutes to make those changes?
Well, that's why I put them on the screen so people would see it.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, if you will, the, I can take this upstairs, and they're on, it's on Shannon's computer, and make the changes now. You can take on the office business, and I'll bring this back and take a final vote if you wish.
I'd like to send a motion to that effect, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. Just from my perspective, from a legal perspective, the amendments were done in an appropriate way. I have them marked, and so the other option is vote on it now based upon those amendments, and I will bring it back up to you for signature by closing the meeting.
And in addition, I already spoke to the clerk, saying that I've outlined enough and would think that she had the finished product before the signature page was provided.
Nonetheless, I think it would still be better to see those changes on paper in order for me to vote on it.
Commissioners, we do have Vice Chair O'Donnell online, and we are in discussion. So I'd like to, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and those in the audience. I am not going to support any amendment that implies sanctuary or goes against the wishes of the state legislature, the Democratic majority. The amendments, while I appreciate it, have nothing to do with current legislation and do not pertain to Senate Bill eight or any of the gun bills currently before the legislature. I would like to say that the amendments, like, that they do not, they do not pertain, the Senate, the House vote on Senate Bill eight was done last night. They're in public to not comment. The last hearing was March 2nd, in the day, in front of the House Judiciary, and it was the hearing on Senate Bill eight. At that point, all those amendments had already been included, and those amendments, once again, were, this law not, does not pertain to family transfers. If you want fixing guns, it does not pertain to, it is not a due process issue, it's not an unconstitutional issue. It creates, it just closes a loophole and allows for background checks at gun sales, background checks between private individuals who are transferring money, and also it does not apply to four-H clubs, shooting rages. So I, if any form this resolution takes, I'm not gonna support it. I understand SB eight will be signed into law by the governor on Thursday after it's been enrolled and enrobed. And I do not in any way wanna be lumped with the other twenty-five counties who passed sanctuary resolutions. I think it's a politically unwise move toward the Mexico bill. And while I appreciate everyone who showed up and gave their opinions, I think the sanctuary campaign was misdecorated, aggressive, and very confusing. So that's where I stand, so, and that's my position.
Mr. Chairman, what's the issue with this resolution?
You're correct.
I understand that, but we worked with all the other counties, but we've passed some things, and we all know that this doesn't, even with your amendments, this does not relate to searches and seizures, it does not relate to due process. We present, we uphold the Constitution.
Commissioner, just to maybe this.
Commissioner, Commissioner Fambro, Commissioners of the Board, Vice Chair, I think it would probably be in our best interest at this point to have staff go up. She's doing that. So we have this amended resolution getting documented. Commissioner, Vice Chair O'Donnell, we can send that by email to you, we can review this. So in order to keep good structured order, I'd ask Commissioner Fambro.
I have a final statement, okay, that I've prepared.
Well, Commissioner Fambro, would you rather, should we just wait, I guess, or do you want to do a friendly amendment, take that motion off, we can move on with the rest of the agenda until that's presented?
I would actually like to yield to Sheriff Holger to speak, I hope, I don't know what he's gonna talk about, but I'm hoping that he says something that discounts something that Commissioner O'Donnell just said.
Well, we're still in discussion, so hopefully we can get that document down before we finish our discussion and we get a.
I know it's not a good yield to anyone from the floor, but I would ask that. We do it this time, just because something was challenged.
Correct, and respectfully, Sheriff Holger proposed this resolution, and I think it's fair that he has the process of explaining himself a bit. So we do have, Vice Chair, we do have Sheriff Holger, let me know if you can hear.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanna address that last thing because it just set me off. House Bill 130 actually creates laws that are less strict than current laws. That's the Feel Good Child Safety Act. If you read just the heading of that, it sounds wonderful. Right now, if a gun is unsecured in a home and a child gains access to it, two things could be charged. Child abuse or neglect by the omission of that act or exposing that child to a dangerous situation, that is charged by freckling, and it is a felony, a fourth degree felony. The other that could be charged is non-family member or non-household, and is between an adult and a child, is contributing to the delinquency of a minor. The delinquent act being the child in possession of a firearm, which, as you know, is a delinquent act, or a crime, if you will. That is also a felony. I have personally charged that one recently in a case where a child killed herself because she obtained a gun from somebody illegally. That law's already there. House Bill 130 would make those misdemeanors, we're going backwards, we're going backwards. Misdemeanors are not as enforceable as the law that carries less family than a fourth degree felony. The other thing I wanna bring up is there is due process issues in some of these bills. The firearms emergency protection order, I have a problem with that because, and granted, there are still amendments being talked about to this. This may have gone away yesterday. I have yet to read it because the postings are usually two to three days behind. When I checked last night, it wasn't changed. There is a due process for that. If you infringe your due process, then any individual person can go and file a civil petition alleging violence on your behalf, and the judge can issue that to go and seize your weapons and firearms before you even had the first hearing. In fact, five days is what they're allowed to schedule that first hearing. I said it two weeks ago when I presented, I would be okay if there was worrying said and bring, you know, serve this protection order and bring this person before the court without an unnecessary delay. So the person at least has the right to defend themselves. So as Mr. Fambro said, I would still get to go hunting because he's gonna take, you know, and make a false allegation of it. The other problem I have with that is that right now perjury is a fourth degree felony. If you perjure a legal document, court document, something that you've attested to or assorted, you can be charged with perjury, and if convicted, that is a fourth degree felony. Under this bill, it only becomes a misdemeanor. And once again, we are going backwards with softer penalties. That, Commissioners, is in this resolution. It's one of the things that I'm extremely passionate about, the preservation of your first, second, fourth, and fifth amendment rights, as well as your due process, and I don't wanna see anything that's going to mean there's a softer penalty for criminals. I cannot and will not accept that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I believe that, again, these bills have not yet been passed, and I would like the various committees to make necessary amendments, and I suggest the sheriff goes that way and testify in those hearings if he feels passionate. Again, we are talking about laws that have not been even gone through various committee hearings, and if the sheriff wants to give his opinion, then he should go to Santa Fe and see if he can make these amendments to the various bills. So this is, I believe, totally inappropriate, and I also am going to reject that. The sheriff would allow speech because there's amendment on the board before the Commission.
Thank you, Vice Chair. One more time, because I'm the sheriff, I'm gonna back down. We have been to the legislative session. The New Mexico Sheriff's Association has been there, other lobbyists have been there. It's very unfortunate that it comes to this Commission for a resolution because what we were expressing to the legislators and the lawmakers about these bills have fallen on deaf ears. In fact, they have cleared the chambers and not allowed testimony from the audience to include my fellow elected sheriffs in this state. I just wanted to clarify that, that we've tried, we really have tried. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I'll read now based on Commissioner O'Donnell's comments, I read my prepared statement that I've worked on. It's short, but I have a read it.
Okay.
In the words of Representative Alina Cummings, who is the chairman of the House Oversight Committee, he recently said at a hearing, "The thing that we can give our children is a democracy intact." The thing that we can give our children forever and ever is a democracy intact. So now we have the sheriffs fighting with the governor, the governor lashing out at the sheriffs, we have people threatening the elected officials. A sheriff would have been better than that. Our job is not to vote for things that will not offend the governor. Our job is to vote for things that will not offend other elected officials. Our job is to vote for what's best for Taus County. And don't hold the office and Commissioners and Sheriff and Anna and what else here. This is our oath. Our oath is to support the constitutional laws of the United States of America, to support the law, constitutional law of the State of New Mexico. We are not better than that. That is the oath that we took, and that is the oath that we shall adhere to. Is all this gonna lead us to a better Taus County? I sure hope so.
Any further discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman, as the resolution is getting recrafted, reworded, edited, and prepared, I would hope that when it is done, we can look at it again and read it for the record.
I would hope that when it is done, we can look at it again and read it for the record out loud, Mr. Chairman. It's not but a page and a quarter or so, correct? It won't take all that much time. But I would like for all of the people in this room to be able to leave knowing exactly what it is that we passed on that resolution today, if that's the way it goes.
Fair enough. There is a motion, and a second, and I'm going to put on the floor. We have had discussion. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Romano?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackebird?
No.
Commissioner Farrow?
We're voting on Commissioner Romano's.
We're voting on the proposed resolution. Um, Commissioners, we have it. Let's look at it. We'll go ahead and read this. I have a motion. And it's been emailed to Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner O'Donnell, you've got the email.
I'm checked.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if you're up there. Sorry for doing.
Read for the record the proposed new resolution 2019-13. I will ask that Commissioner Farrow read this into the record. And then I will reiterate the ask for roll call vote again. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, resolution 2019-13, proposing softer sentencing requirements and legislation that would propose rules, regulations, and restrictions exceeding federal law on all private firms, transfers of lawful ownership, and infringe an individual's rights to due process. Whereas it is expressed concern that the New Mexico Legislature not enact any laws that reduce penalty upon conviction from which any other crime can already be charged and tried. Whereas during the New Mexico legislative session, New Mexico state lawmakers will consider legislation backed by national gun control organization, every town for gun safety that will exceed the scope of federal gun laws, restrict the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens, and negatively impact events which directly contribute to local economy and constitutional right to protect oneself. Whereas proposed legislation would criminalize nearly all private firearm sales between individuals, friends, neighbors, coworkers, hunting partners, competitive shooters, and fellow gun club members, and require them to be conducted through a federal firearms license dealer with extensive government pay for and payment of undetermined fees. Whereas the restrictions imposed by proposed legislation exceed those requirements found in federal law or laws in neighboring states. Whereas nearly 80% of the law enforcement officers serving in Police One in 2013 said that prohibition on private non-dealer transfers of firearms between individuals, such as the proposed Senate Bill 8, House Bill 40, and Senate Bill 201, did not reduce violent crime. Whereas existing laws on federal firearm sales are not being enforced as mentioned in the September 2018 report by the United States Government Accountability Office, which states that the 1,112, 900, 112,900 people who were turned down for a gun purchase in fiscal year 2017, only 12 prosecutions by the United States Attorney's Office as of June 2018. And any laws such as Senate Bill 8 and House Bill 40 are recognized as being unenforceable and problematic to enforce. And whereas we, the people, shall not infringe on to our rights as granted by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Mexico, and that all persons have protection from unlawful searches, and persons accused have right of due process before the seizure of property. And whereas it is expressed concern that the New Mexico Legislature not enact any laws that reduce penalty upon conviction from another crime which has already been charged and tried. And whereas county supports individual rights as granted by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Mexico, and that all persons have protection from all unlawful searches, and persons accused have the right to due process of the law. Now therefore be resolved, Taos County County Board of Commissioners, that Taos County supports the right of private individuals to constitutional due process, to lawfully sell, transfer, legally own firearms, property without government interference. And opposes any legislation which exceed federal law governing individuals' firearms, ownership, and sales.
That is the resolution. Can I call for the question? Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Farrow?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
No, I would like discussion out there.
We had discussion. I call for the question?
No, no, well, you called for the question. I didn't hear it. I would like discussion because it's still flawed. I do not understand what you mean by criminalize nearly all private firearm sales. It doesn't, there's no law currently that would do that. So again, this is a very confusing resolution, and I will not support it.
So thank you, thank you, Vice Chair. There was a motion and a second. A motion made by Commissioner Farrow, second by myself as chair. We asked for a roll call vote. All we asked, Vice Chair, was now that we have the resolution amended, that he could read it correctly in two minutes. We're still on roll call vote. So if you can just give us roll call vote, that we're currently in right now.
Commissioner Romano, yes. Commissioner Blackebird, no. Commissioner Farrow, yes. Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Vice Chair O'Donnell, it's your turn.
No.
Chairman Farrow?
Yes. Pass three to two. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you all. Thank you. Next item is Item 8, A New Business, 2019, 2018. Motion and second have been made. This one is for roll call.
Commissioner Romano?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Vice Chair O'Donnell, if you'd like to talk.
Okay, Chairman Farrow?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Next item, Item 9A. This is a presentation. Notice to Taos County Board of Commissioners that AERSCME Local 1193 and AERSCME Local 2091 union will be at negotiations for this coming fiscal year 2019, 2020. We do have Chris Amigo, who will be as counsel for the county staff representative.
I'll say good afternoon, but we're not quite there yet. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to bring this forth. Chairman Daniels, Commissioners, we have submitted a letter to negotiate to the county manager on February 26 of 2019. Basically, this letter says that we wish to negotiate and we're also requesting financial information from the county to determine what's your financial health. It's pretty accurate. There again, it's probably going to require you to probably look under a couple seat cushions. We've already done that. We identified some monies that we understand are still out there. There was E911 monies that the taxpayers passed in that town. I think that was approximately $380,000. That was a savings to the county. We had discussions with your former county manager. And during those discussions, he had told us those $380,000 would be applied to salaries because there's a recurring savings. Unfortunately, what happened was that money got absorbed into the general fund, and then it wasn't able to see that. The reason we need a request before we go into negotiations is last year, we hit a speed bump. Of course, we were very forgiving of it. What happened was that the former county manager, he pushed through a budget while we were still negotiating people with basically bad faith or any... He cried and followed, but we decided that in the best interest of the local and the best interest of the county, we weren't going to pursue it. We just said, okay, we'll catch up on it this year. So that is why we're here today. Also, during that course of time, we also added another ASME Local, which is ASME Local 2911, which is your peace officers' union. And that, of course, is representative of your deputies, your sergeants, who are pre-reading. And we're going to enter new negotiations for that. And speaking with your new county manager, Mr. Harald Neil, probably about mid-April before we get to the table on the new contract, and also taking up where we are with ASME Local 1193. So with that being said, we just want you to be cognizant that we are going to the table. Of course, there's going to be some economic issues that we will be bringing at the table for Local 1193, which is your blue and white collar workers, and your ASME Local 2911, which is your peace officers' union. And we just pray that you're going to be a little conservative with some of the other asks that you'll be getting from the departments when it comes to the monies that they're going to be searching out because we feel that both our locals, which is a blue and white collar, and also our peace officers, your law enforcement sheriff's offices, we're going to be looking for some monies also. I know that right now ADC, they have like 13 people vacancy, which is your county without detention center. That being said, we had discussions prior to the departure of Mr. Porogon that we were looking at trying to create a retention and recruitment raise. That way we could see about attracting more people to the detention center. I think that's noteworthy, and I pray that we can continue with that discussion as even possible before we get to the table. We need to find something to stop... Oh, what word do I use without the exodus, I guess, from ADC, if you will, or the bloodletting? We've got to retain... Of course, peace officers are very important to us. But unfortunately, ADC, they have to house the people that peace officers bring in. There was a presentation given to you all about five, six weeks ago during one of your work sessions. And the sheriff and his deputies, his supervisors, the sergeants, they brought to attention that per capita Taos County was the second most wightened in the state, which is very alarming to me. I love this community. I truly do. In fact, I afford it. I can move up here. But when I came around to bed this morning, I saw a snow cap mountain just... You know, for the last 33 years, my wife and I have come to this community just to get away and relax. And I contest that the safety rush in room 100 is ours. It's close to the breakfast buffet, so that's good for us. We come up at least seven, eight times a year just to get away. Getting back on track, we are going to have this ask that you bear in mind that as the different departments in Taos County come before you with their ask, that you bear in mind that we're not going to be that behind like we did last year. We got literally just cut out of the whole deal, which once again was an unfair favor practice. We're not going to allow that to happen again. And we're not going to be less forgiving, if you will. I notice another ask that the sheriff made to you personally. I don't know how we're going to work this into our contract or not, but I noticed an ask by the sheriff that he needs six more additional deputies in his office. Reason I bring that up is because, as one of your constituents stated earlier, that sometimes the sheriffs don't respond whenever they ever would get there.
Excuse me, one sec. Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I just want to caution everyone. We're starting to talk about specific things that would be the subject of bargaining. And, you know, it's properly at the table. So I appreciate summaries and letting everybody know that we're starting, but we're kind of getting down into weeds of what's going to be at the table. So just caution.
Thank you for correcting. It's just the fact I'm bringing that up was because people thought of her here. They do want to get additional officers out there, and he wants to assign them to each of your districts. That way they would be fully covered with quicker responses. So at this point, I'm going to shut down my portion of this. I do have a couple of members with me. I have Marvin Amigo. He's no relation to me. Unless he's fully over for speeding, take a trip, talk my way out of it. And then I have Diana Lester. She's the vice president for ASME Local 1193. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry. For you that have been keeping up with the news on the subject of, not per danger, but when it comes to salary increases, Rio Rico County just secured raises for their deputy shows. And of course, in the city of San Jose, the mayor proposed a $600,000 sum of monies that they can do a retention bonus for their officers because they've lost eleven officers to Albert Peak. And Rio Rico County has lost five of their officers to the city of Noma. So whether it's ADC, or it's JDC, or if it's your blue and white collar employees, they're high in demand. And I just pray that you, as Commissioners, will recognize your most important assets, and that are your employees. Thank you all.
But Chris, the sheriff said if we pass that resolution, he'd forego it anyways.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Amio. My name is Diana Lester. I'm the vice president of ASME Local 1193, which, as Mr. Amio stated, together with 2911 represents our Taos County workers. He, as Mr. Amio said, we are formally announcing our request to open negotiations for our next collective bargaining agreement. And we are technically planning on beginning those negotiations in mid-April. The negotiation of a new contract represents a unique opportunity for labor and management to come together for the benefit of an organization and everyone it serves. As we go to the table this year, I would encourage us on all sides to think about what kind of county we want to have. Do we want a county plagued by high turnover and unfilled vacancies as dedicated and highly qualified employees are forced to leave for better opportunities? Do we want a county whose employees are exhausted from working second and third jobs in order to support their families? Do we want a county whose employees must turn to food stamps in order to make sure their children have enough to eat? This is the reality for many Taos County employees right now. As we go to the table, I ask you to consider, how does this affect the citizens of Taos County and the quality of the services we are able to provide? How can we do better by the people of Taos County, both those we employ and those we serve? Together, we have an opportunity to make Taos County a workplace that inspires our talented young people into a career in local public service, rewards loyalty and longevity with stability and prosperity, and allows our veteran lifelong employees to retire knowing that their names will be met. In doing so, we will be improving the services and therefore the lives of your constituents, the citizens of Taos County. As former UAW President Walter Ruther once said, "There is no greater calling than to serve your brother, and no greater satisfaction than to have done it well." I look forward to working together to create another contract that all of Taos County can be proud of. Thank you for your time and for your service to the people of Taos County.
Commissioners, thank you. Thanks for your hesitation. And we'll have our department executives and staff and DVO council be waiting for your guys' proposals.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, we do have Item 10. This is Item A, new business discussion, consideration, decision regarding the funding of Taos Air. We have Karina Amiyo, Department of Justice Director. Mr. Chairman? Yes.
That other item was added.
Exactly. I was going to. We added Item B, which would be a decision on approving potential funding for Taos Air as well. So we moved Item 16B to be under 10. A, that's a new item, Item B. Ms. Amio, go ahead.
Good morning, almost good afternoon. My name is Karina Amiyo. I'm the Town and Taos Marketing Service Director. And I want to talk to you about extending summer air service with Taos Air. I've invited David Norton, CEO of Taos Valley, to talk to you a little bit about how Taos Air began and the efforts to this winter and the success of the winter program. So I'll start with him, and then I'll proceed with the summer air program. So I'll start with him and then I'll proceed with the summer air program.
Hi, my name is David Norton, CEO of Tauski Valley. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it. We want to, so we've had a relationship with the town of Taos dating back to the extension of the runway. We signed in 2017 if the runway was extended. I hadn't been here for 30 years, but I understand it's taken 30 years for that to happen. And once the runway was completed, there was a big effort to put, being put into place to see if the service could be introduced. There's been a lot of momentum behind the program. People have looked at this to be a great economic generator. And we put a service in place that began December 20th of 19... Sorry, of 2018. Our service is utilizing a 30-seat Dornier 328 jet, 30-passenger jet service from Dallas and Austin nonstop into Taos. We are a ski area resort operator, we're an airline operator. So what we've done, we've actually purchased the aircraft and we've partnered with an organization called Ultimate Jets. Ultimate Jet is an operator, they bring the pilots, they bring the attendants. And they've got a current service that operates out of Cincinnati on a regular basis. But again, this is the organization above the aircraft from and we're currently operating. The program that we introduced has been extremely successful. We launched it on December 20th, it's three days a week. And it runs through, it'll run through March 31st of this year. This is the plane, we branded it with the Taos logo. We've invited a lot of folks to take the plane here if you're interested in it. But again, so far, the service has been very successful. We see this as a great partnership with the community. We've worked with a lot of those at the Enchanted Circle and Red River, Questa, Angel Fire, and others have been involved with the development of the program. It's been supported by the Taos Pablo. And earlier today during the prayer, just to talk about the ambiance, the environment here. I don't know if you're aware, we're the world's first resort certified as a B Corporation, which allows us to look heavily at our environmental and social responsibility. We felt concerned about introducing an airline that brings a lot of carbon to the environment. So we created a carbon offset program. So this, I believe, I've done some research, I believe this is the first airline in the world that has a full carbon offset, which means it's a net zero program. We had a company look into all of the carbon that had been produced. And we are investing in companies that reduce emissions. On the screen is the schedule that has been implemented to date. The nice thing about operating the airline, Chris, is having another airline company in is we get to tailor our schedules to the guests, resort guests. So they basically arrive on Thursday, depart on Sunday, have great opportunity to enjoy Taos and the region. The outbound flights, we discount it from a 400 round trip to 200 round trip, actually 192, to the benefit of people that live locally. When we launched the program, we did put on a pretty heavy-duty marketing campaign in Dallas and Austin. And this kind of shows a little bit of what the digital looks like. The idea was the fastest and easiest route to the Rockies. The pieces that make it simple are we fly out of an executive airport in both Austin and Dallas. So you don't have to go through TSA, there's no security. When you arrive, our shuttle can shove at the airport. And for those that are looking to ski, we've actually partnered with a company called Roswell. So you get a Roswell ski or snowboard demo. So it's a very, very simple approach. And again, today, it worked very, very well. This is some of the non-digital advertising that went into both the Dallas and the Austin markets, again, building on the idea of the easiest route to the Rockies. And then finally, the results. We had airplane travel is measured by a term called load factor. In the hotel business, it's occupancy. They're sort of the same thing. We had forecasted a 45% load factor for the winter season. These are the load factors at Boston and Dallas. Through the year, we're approaching, we've already exceeded a 65% load factor. So this has greatly exceeded our budget and our forecast. The average fare is $480 round trip. And just like any airline, if you buy it early, you'll get the better price. And as the plane pulls up, the price will go up. We were very curious to see where people would go. And there's a survey out that we're tracking. One half of visitors are traveling into Tauski Valley. The other half are traveling to the region in general. We believe that the summer service would probably skew a lot more towards the town. And for the Enchanted Circle, maybe the 20, maybe even the 90, 10. We see a lot less visitation in the summer. I guess I passed it on there. Just our approach here is not to make a strong sales pitch for the town and the counties with office. We're making the plane available. Currently, what we have is a charter service in place for the summer. And the service that we have needs to be supported with a charter on the off days for it to work financially. We would love to see the program continue through the summer. And the proposal on the table is to continue the same type of service to the same cities, minute the marketing that's been put in place that has been very successful. So we're happy to make the plane available. We're happy to make the service available. I think the details of that will be with Karina.
Okay, so we hired Southwest Planning and Marketing out of Santa Fe to do an economic impact analysis. And I do have those for all of you to look at. It's pretty detailed. But some of the things that we found in there was that as far as spending goes, $2.1 million for the winter program for about 2,640 inbound passengers. So those passengers that originated in Texas will be spending $2.1 million in the area. And that includes Angel Fire, Red River, Eagleness, Questa, Colfax County, the village of Tauski Valley, and town of Taos. So that, that means to, or that is about $792, just under $800 per passenger. The schedule that we would like to propose for summer is from, we run from June 22nd to September 22nd, to 27th. That's 13 weeks. And it would be the same schedule as is currently happening in the winter. So that's about 2,340 inbound and outbound. The funding requirement for those 13 weeks is $550,000. And we're hoping to have a commitment from everyone by the end of this week. Currently, the funding breakdown is what you see in front of you. The town of Taos, they unanimously voted for $200,000 to support the service. Tauski Valley unanimously voted for $35,000 to support the service. Angel Fire, they're $10,000 coming from the ski area. The rest is coming from the municipality. And they're voting on that this evening. I understand they are starting full support. The vote comes this evening. Red River is at $35,000 and their vote will come in next week. And they gave me a letter of support that they are supporting the service. Colfax County is soft support right now. They're, they supported unanimously as well. But they're looking into legalities because this isn't coming from their lodgers tax because they don't have lodgers tax, it'll be coming from GRTs. So once they get that information, that will go to a vote. Still working on Questa. And that leaves about $42,500, which I'm working on some of the private companies to see if we can make the difference. So what we're asking from the county is $200,000. And that is approximately $87 per passenger if we were doing a 70% load factor. The marketing is a different $200,000. The $400,000 proposed spend is based on a New Mexico Department of Transportation grant that we received in the winter. We were the fiscal agents for Tauski Valley. And they matched that 100% plus another $100,000. We have to go off of the grant again. And the town of Taos has committed $100,000 out of their loders tax for that match. We would do a summer branding. Just, we would definitely focus on Enchanted Circle imagery to push all of the summer events that happen and summer recreation that happens in the area. And those are the basic facts behind that. I wanted to relay a couple other things. We did get a letter of support from the director of SMU Taos, a long letter that I can send copies to you. They really support the summer service, as well as a letter from the Taos County Chamber of Commerce. We got support from Kate Carson from Ojo Stratus, I have. And Ojo Cavante Spa and Resort will be sending a letter as well. So we've seen her a lot of really great support, wanting to extend this service to the summer. And I do feel strongly that we can, we can really do great just as much as, I guess, how great it's been doing in the winter, we can, we can match that for the summer. Summer is our biggest season. And we can sell all the great things in the region. And I think we get hit a 7% load factor problem. So Dallas and Austin, those are two really great markets for us. They're not, they've been identified at the state level as well as we've identified it as our two biggest markets. And so we see now the tourism efforts behind it, or economic vitality or economic development based on both leisure and business travel. And we see that extending beyond tourism. And that, to me, is really exciting and important to address because Austin and Dallas have that big markets of technology and remote work that people come here and decide to really invest in this community beyond tourism. The first step is transportation and getting here, making it easier for those people to get here. So I'm not sure if we jump into the loders tax portions or if you have any questions for me.
Let's find out if there's any questions for the commissioner. We're currently requesting a few loders tax. So Commissioners, I'll give you a floor to the questions for the commissioner. Just to start off, thank you for being here. If you guys take a glass of water or a couple of drinks, are they contributing any money to this idea?
I did not ask them for funds just yet. I would probably look at the marketing dollars, specifically for Ojo Cavante Spa and Resort. I really wanted to see the municipalities kind of fall 100% in before I asked the private sector for funds.
So how, how do you feel that the people of Taos County will benefit from this in terms of dollars, tourist dollars?
I have an economic impact analysis that I'll let you see. Actually, I have a copy. What we saw, and again, this is winter, so of course, this is going to be different for summer. About half a million dollars is spent on lodging. So we see that happening, obviously, for the summer. And then about $358,000 in, I thought it was in recreation. Or no, that was restaurant. The second highest spend was in restaurants. So, and then we have outdoor recreation, shopping, transportation, fuel, things like that. So it's all broken down. If we, I really feel strongly that we have such, there's so many people that really want this service. And I see those numbers translate from the ski valley down to the community. Now, the economic impact analysis, when we asked these flyers, the passengers, we didn't say Taos to Taos County because most people don't know the difference where they're staying, whether it's in the county or the town. So when you, the Taos numbers are really reflective of the whole county or at least in areas like if you Ada Medley or went to Ojo or Taos Beach of Rome, for example. So all of those areas are going to see the benefits of passengers coming through here. And we see it not just in GRTs and loders tax, but in a lot of different ways of marketing assets and just getting the word out there for Taos.
So Mr. Chairman, how are they transported then from the airport? They fly in, they fly out. How are they transported from the airport to the ski valley and, for example, other destinations? And how many hotel rooms does Tauski Valley have to accommodate them?
I'm not sure how many rooms the ski valley has to do.
Well, with respect to this summer service, I don't think, I think most people will not be going to the ski valley. I think they'll be going throughout the county and throughout other areas of the Enchanted Circle. So we run an 80 key hotel, called the Lake.
Right. And so that's where most of the people that fly in and out of Dallas through this airline?
No.
Stay at the ski valley?
Well, no, actually, what we're seeing is that around 50% of people are actually going to the ski valley. But we're seeing a lot of bigger numbers that are actually staying down here. And mainly because the lake is a four-star hotel, I'm not mistaken. So it's a little bit higher priced. As far as the shuttle service goes, Tauski Valley does provide free shuttle service from the airplane to the lake. But what we found is that a lot of these passengers are taking other forms of transportation. There is a Mountain View Shuttle, which has been really busy. And they've extended their fleet because they're there on the ground waiting for people. Also, Angel Fire and Red River both have added transportation. So you'll see their handles there if they get the call in. So as this is growing and the demand is there, we're seeing the private sector get involved and fill those voids.
And so, say, for example, these flyers want to go to Ojo Cavante. How do they get there?
Well, if we were to extend summer service, one of the things that I would be doing is calling those places like Ojo and, you know, and asking them, would you, do you provide shuttle service? And what can we do to get the word out for you? And that's what we did for Angel Fire and Red River.
Commissioners, any other discussion? The, Mr. Chairman, I request the appropriate time to, we had a discussion at the Mexico County's legislative conference with two of the Colfax County Commissioners. And they would really, they had a lot of good things to say about this. And they would like the aspect, something that affects Questa, I think, a little bit affects them, to promote hunters, fishermen, to actually use the service. So they would like to see it, even extend it in the marketing to include that. He kind of alluded to us that if he, if that were to happen, they would have a little more time. Because there is a lot of hunting, you know. Yes, you can find the raptone private. They'd love to have this going into raptone for all the hunters of NRA, Whittington Center, and so many other things that he mentioned. But my general feeling was that they were really in favor of it and would like to see marketing in that.
So the marketing, okay, so let's talk about the service a little bit. The 13 weeks, you know, for every week that we add on to it, it costs an extra money to pay for it. So we really condensed it so that it wouldn't be so much money. Like 50 was, we thought if we could divide it, would be easier to deal with. So that's why we're at 13 weeks. And we really looked at our biggest season being, you know, tuned to, it runs now, our seasons are running pretty high numbers into October. But we have to squeeze in a little bit for this year. If it is extremely successful, that's what we look at next year, adding those weeks on either end of those 13 weeks. As far as the marketing goes, you know, it would be our job, my job as the town of Taos, if we could do get the grant, that we would make sure that every community is represented in their assets for the marketing. So we want to make sure that, yeah, that, you know, what you do in Eagleness is different than what you would do in the town of Taos. And I did that for the Enchanted Circle marketing group. And I did that for the Enchanted Circle Marketing Group. I was in charge of the co-op marketing effort that happened a few years ago where everybody put money on the table to do music, student culture. We recognize music as the, kind of the common thread, even though the music's very different. You travel around Enchanted Circle and it was my job to make sure that every community was visually represented in that, in that campaign.
Commissioner?
Commissioner, Blake. Commissioner. So we always talk about economic development, you know, here, but it's hard for us to figure out which levers to pull to actually make it happen. This one's pretty easy, you know, and it's kind of a rare opportunity. You don't often get just the possibility sort of out of the blue to actually encourage, enable people to fly into your community. Air service is a, is a huge potential economic development. You know, anybody who flies in generally, most of them, none of you place to stay. And some of that is going to translate to our Airbnbs, some of it's going to translate to our hotels. And that's why I've asked to consider the lodger's tax obviously as part of this. It's sort of a direct injection into heads and beds, flying people in. And they tend to be people of some means as, as Karina has showed us with some of her statistics. So currently, what we do with like 110,000 that we have available, maybe it'll go up to like 120 this year because of the extra Airbnb. And I think with the new law, it will, it will continue to grow, especially if the service is in place. So a little bit more money to potentially use to help this out. You know, we, the town gets about four times as much lodger's tax as we, so we don't have quite the flexibility obviously that they do. But we do have some. So currently, we, we divide 110 grand into 25 separate advertising budgets, okay? Each one of these groups has its own little advertising budget. It's kind of good for the Taus news, but I don't think it's the most effective way that we can spend our dollars. If people fly, you know, to Taus Air, you know, something that we're going to be going to a lot of these events that we're helping to support. I think the reason we've done this in the past is because we've never had any other options, you know? It's just something we've done and it's worked out, but now we're faced with another option that in my mind is clearly a more effective use of the funds. I'm not saying we should abandon all of these groups. I think that there's maybe a way we can help centralize and get the word out for them. But I'm in favor of using most of our lodger's tax to go for this. You know, I think it's kind of similar to the TIN in a way. We had to be part of that, you know? We had to be part of the TIN to make it happen. They weren't going to pass it into legislature unless they felt the buy-in from all of the entities. And I believe that the same is true here. So I do think we need to support this and participate. And I don't know if there's anything in the operating budget, with only four months left in our budget, I'm not sure that there's anything left, but I'd certainly like to hear from the administration on that. I don't know whether the FAA would approve us transferring any of our reserves for this outside of the budget that we're closing in on, but I would like to hear, hear about those possibilities also.
Okay. For stone presentation part for our new business, I did want to ask Karina, I had asked this in the last joint meeting, what contribution have you reached out with Dallas and Austin? Are they participating in any of this funding or do they get to reap the benefits of Taus Enios going to Dallas with our advertising, of our advertising? I guess, you know, because we're playing both ways, I think it's going to be attractive for visitors from here. Why don't you go to visit, have your friends in Dallas, watch a football game, maybe see a concert? I think they ought to participate just as much as you guys are asking us to participate as we're doing, we're having a partnership, we're developing a relationship. I think they should be part of this. And that's their committee, otherwise in a way that we don't know about. They're giving free, I don't know what they're doing, but I mean, if we understand what they're doing, then it gives us an understanding. We're not contributing all this money to get visitors to come here without, you know, them participating in some of this action too. So that was one question I wanted to ask. I asked the, hopefully you get that information to us back. Do I, we stuck on the summer flight session? Is that ever getting something injected? Have that conversation with FAA or can be pushed a little further? So there could be that potential of catching those early bow hunters that are, you know, I don't know. I mean, these are just some of the questions that I, that I've wanted to ask. I probably should have been with you earlier so we could have got those addressed, but...
Well, I can adjust the first one, Austin, Dallas situation. Right now, I'm really looking at support from everyone in Enchanted Circle for the service. That's really important to me. And I think that I would get a lot more support from the private sector if they see that. They're kind of waiting for the counties, the county going to be in like everyone else is in. And that I have a lot of leverage for that. As far as Dallas and Austin, we're already getting a lot of phone calls from Dallas and Austin and Santa Fe that want to help or want to participate in marketing efforts. So that, that would be a whole different conversation about the marketing. I wouldn't expect Dallas and Austin, you know, to, to put in money for the service. But the marketing, it's an opportunity that I'm willing and ready to, to try to figure out how we can extend, you know, to try to get them to buy ads or things like that. But that's a little bit of a future conversation. I have to know whether or not we're in for the summer service.
Yeah, I think the reason why this is brought up is that it's very interesting and appealing to have them buy into marketing so that we can move this forward. We, maybe we invest into the marketing side of it, that Taus paid them like 500,000. I don't know. I mean, I'm just kind of throwing it out there because we want to market the surrounding areas as part of our lodger's tax, what we're trying to do. I mean, we can fund some things. I'm trying to be thinking outside the box if we could. I don't want to be pro or against. I really wanted to make it seem that our goal is to have events so that visitors can come. If we dug 200,000 into getting services here and then some of these 25 programs that we support aren't around because they do need that support for their advertising to get their programs here, what are they coming? They're going to come visit and they're going to say, I thought you guys could do concerts and you could park. Well, we didn't because we spent 200,000 each year. Now, walk around by the paintings. I don't know. I mean, so I'm really trying to put a good balance to this. I like the idea, I just am having a hard time trying to figure out how it makes sense for almost all of the ground. And hopefully, as we go into the next item for discussion of lodger's tax, maybe we can see how creative we can be with that. Right now, it's really important to know that how many of the players are in the room and those that have been also there from the services that are going to participate.
Okay. Can I adjust the hunting part?
Sure, sure.
I myself am not a hunter, but I'm surrounded by hunters. I don't know exactly the seasons. I know that it's different. And I don't know what the economic impact or how many people actually would fly here that were hunters. It's easy for me to look at people who would fly here for music or pueblo or a lot of the different cultural events. So I'm not opposed to looking at that and seeing, you know, what does that mean? I'm looking at four more weeks of air service and that would have to go back to Taus Air and look at what those costs would be. So I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that there are a lot of different factors in that because we, you know, we have some things going on in May too, but we've cut May out because it doesn't seem like it's as lucrative as those summer ones are.
I mean, you heard, you heard a gentleman earlier today talk about the softball fields. You know, they have 12 tournaments right at the end of their regular season that they could bring in. Four or five teams from Dallas or Austin come play. And that's towards, and then these guys drive or they fly it out. So, you know, that's kind of, I'm just trying, if we can stretch it, if we push you to, I mean, I can see that the heart of visits and season might be Taus County. Regionally, if you're going to encompass this whole thing for all of us to gain, those request of $5,000, that's what is required. Representatives that include your quest of say yes to the most economic development. We focus all on fall activities. Is that, can we not, do we have any part of opposition to the recreation, I mean, marketing? I don't, I don't, like I said, these are things that we're not trying to say no to, but I just want to get a good grasp of how to maximize that potential.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Commissioner. It's always bothered me a little bit when we do the lodger's tax and, 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 and your committee does a great job. And I respect their wishes and I would never go against them. That's why we appoint a commission. But advertising for fiestas, I mean, everybody knows that based on whatever saint said in your community, you're going to have your fiestas. I don't understand the benefit that we're getting by giving people money to advertise canals for fiestas or something. I haven't, I haven't seen this, I can tie it right to nothing. There's a person in our community that's not a skier, not a hunter, not anybody, but had a relative in Dallas that was sent. She bought a ticket, went, stayed with her relative and came back, absolutely loved the flight. It was affordable. Said the people on the flight were nice, food, drinks, it was comfortable seating. You didn't have to go through the stuff like you would with her other option being Southwest or something. If we get the word out to people, locals are saying that I've taken this flight, had I gone to Mako this weekend, list all the sheriff's, the stuff he dumped in our app again, where did he go, he ran. The, I was going, I was going to use Taus Air to go to Dallas, go to Dallas, to Washington and come back that same way because it's a lot more convenient. And this person, this lady, like I said, not a skier, not a hunter, not a fisherman, not anything, loved this flight. I think we got to figure out some of the...
Okay, I make a comment about what you just said. The study shows that about 24%, of the passengers marked up that they were coming here, this is the people from Texas that were coming here to visit family and friends. So that's inbound. As far as outbound, we didn't see comments, several comments that people were going to Texas for medical reasons. I'm sure, you know, all of us know somebody who have to go to Houston or Dallas to receive cancer treatments and things like that. Funerals and SMU were kind of like the top three things that I saw that were commented on for outbound. So this is not just the inbound, but it is important because it is economic development. But it's also a really great service for our community.
So Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, the contributions that all these entities would make from Colfax and Taus County would be, the money would be going towards promotion, up in billboards or is it for the airline itself?
There's actually two different things we're talking about. The 550s for the service only. Once we get that 550, we have $200,000 that we would raise for the marketing efforts, which would be about $400,000 matching grants. We've already covered 100, so I would be raising another 100. So, so a total of $650,000.
And majority of the marketing effort would take place in Texas, both these markets?
In both of those markets, yes.
Not in Mexico?
No.
All right. Commissioners, anything for new business?
Mr. Chairman, I could just say that the staff put the lodger's tax up there. So the category really this falls into is, I think it was two years ago, state legislature changed the wording of the lodger's tax to allow, since transportation seems to be the biggest setback in getting people to your communities. So under B at the bottom there, it's the minimum revenue guarantee. So basically, what you're doing in this sense is these folks over here have an airline that they lend out the rest of the year to generate this money. We're putting together a revenue guarantee that says we're substituting, that we're leasing that plane at the same period of time. I also wanted to mention that the, there's, there's no risk on this, which is really unusual. If you think of fly Santa Fe, American Eagle doesn't make 60% capacity and they have losses. Santa Fe has to make up those losses. We're being offered a deal with Taus Air that says this is what it costs us, actually they're giving it to us for 75,000 less than it costs them just to have the plane on the runway and fuel it. But if, if it doesn't hit 70%, and I think that's a really high figure, when the winter was calculated at 40%, but it's doing 70 and if it does 70%, that's fine, they break even. If it doesn't do 70%, they're willing to eat the loss on that. So there's nobody else that I can find in small airports that isn't providing 100% revenue guarantee for all of the costs. So this is a pretty unusual benefit.
Mr. Bellis, on the screen before, 40% was break even in the winter?
Yes.
Now, we're saying in summertime, break even is 70%.
Yeah.
Even though there's more work to be done in the wintertime, DIC and doing all that stuff, maintaining the...
I'm sorry. The 45% load factor is not a break even, it's a better budget.
Oh, so check the budget.
Yeah, we had a $550,000 loss at the 45% load factor, but that's a new budget, we create a exceeded budget.
Right.
But I'd also like to share one other thing, and that is that when we first approached this, we had offered to bring the service to the area for the winter. That we would provide the subsidy and we would carry that. And that's exactly what we did. We're so pleased with the, with the results that we're already looking to extend service for next winter, to pick up one or two additional cities. So having a summer operation is a nice momentum to carry forward. We are already committed to next winter. We're already committed to adding at least one, possibly two more cities. And that is financially all on us and not on the county or on the town. So we are committed to winter this year and next year, but the idea was that we would look to the county and the town and the region for the summer operation. I also want to mention that as regards the legal mechanisms for doing the money, that is one of the reasons we put this JPA together for this council of governments. And the state has approved that as a purpose being for shared services and shared economic development projects. So you don't have, we would serve as the fiscal agent, as the, you don't have a procurement issue because it's government to government and it's already permitted under the JPA. You can't use any source of funds. Now, we think the easiest one is because it allows specific language and, and it doesn't take from a general fund. But we're not looking at coming back to you every year for this. So one of my suggestions to governmental entities is we're all starting, we've done our mid-years, we're starting, no, we got a pretty good DFR, leftover one-time monies are going to be, that you can't roll into salaries because usually we buy capital purchases or one-time expenses with that. So it can be any source that you feel best works for you, but you're covered on the procurement end of it.
Mr. Chairman? I hate to interrupt, and I know you're wrapping this issue up, but a logistical problem is coming up because of the length of the meeting today. Our council here for the updated closed session on the top of the world matter has to hit the road at one or a little bit after we get back out, for me to hitch a flight to Denver to handle another one.
Should it's Taus Air?
But, but we, so I would propose we finish this item and then take a break, do that closed session item and come back in a little bit.
Okay.
Appreciate that. We'll, let's move on to the item B, which is 16, what was it, 16B, correct? Discussion, regarding the use of lodger's tax. Commissioner, let me... Thank you. Meanwhile, maybe you can stay standing and I'll work with this, let you on this. That was comfortable. You're on this, whatever's comfortable. But, yeah, so, you know, we've all heard and I think we all get that it's an important service. You know, it just benefits the community in so many different ways. And I just think that Taos County needs to show its support, and then if we don't show our support, it's not likely to occur. So, you know, we have to figure out how much we can pony up. And I don't know if Grant wants to weigh in on this. Now, you know, each of us knows people within these 25 groups that we, that we end up supporting, but it's just not an efficient way of using our funds. Sometimes it goes to, you know, make their website better or pamphlets. A lot of it goes to the Taos news. It's good stuff, it's internalized, but this is a real injection into heads in beds. And so if we're serious about economic development, let's figure out how much we can pony up here. And Grant, what do you think?
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman and members of the commission. I do hear the argument that Carina is made, and I think it has some valid points, that there's more to our lodger's tax. And that's kind of what Loubet and Valerie also have about. And we've got to remember that the fund is divided in three ways. There's promotional, non-promotional, and there's debt service. And we don't generate a whole lot of money. And our debt service right now is averaging around $97,000 a year off that we do generate. We do give out about another $100,000 to local nonprofits. And that does mean a lot to those nonprofits. That's kind of what Valerie wants to speak about. And from our perspective, we don't think using the lodger's tax is a good source because of the debt service. And it would have to be, if you commissioned that as one, again, lodger's tax, then it would have to be at a lower amount than the 100, than the 200,000 requested. Because we obviously do, we just don't have it. We're lucky if we can have 100,000 to contribute, but we just don't have that money. Using the lodger's tax is actually the cleanest method to participate in. And I do understand why they asked us to consider lodger's tax. Absolutely, it's the cleanest method other than our debt service. And I'll let Loubet jump in here on the funds.
Hi, Karen. So regarding the lodger's taxes, and so I had prepared an analysis for our managers right after the second quarter came to a close. And so one of the things I did mention to the commissioners is that the last two fiscal years, we successfully advertised the marketing campaign strategies that were placed with the town of Taos regarding the Mexico trip campaign. So that has had a significant impact regarding the revenues we received from lodger's tax. So when we looked at cash balances at mid-year, the load funds, the lodger's tax and the non-promotional fund balances were pretty high because the revenue we had to generate contributed to the marketing strategies that we used. And those really increased our revenues in the last two fiscal years. So that's one of the options the commissioners has, and that's one thing that we would like to continue, would be the marketing campaign in 2015, 2000...
There's nothing to market unless you want it.
Right.
I'm sorry.
So, before I made the commissioners, it's about 19 pages long. The lodger's tax second quarter for the promotional fund, I've already illustrated earlier, we separate it into three different funds. So from July to December, Taos County had deposited $104,000 into the promotional fund, and that's where we pay our sub- recipients for the promotional and the trips related attractions of the different town. The non-promotional fund is the other fund, and that basically funds the areas that we have a outline, and that's the fund where we pay our debt service, which averages about $87,000 annually. This debt service is going to be something the county will pay for until 2036. We did recently refinance that lodger's tax loan. I will share this information. I did prepare it for management, and I was hoping you would send it off to the commissioners who would see this. I will also give you the currency copies. You can see the last three years of the historical trends of the county and the lodger's tax allocations that we've seen and how we deposit the money that we do have. I just wanted the commissioners to keep in mind that we do pay debt service from lodger's tax. And so for us to commit the $200,000 would really be a detriment to the balances that we have in this fund, considering the fact that we aren't where we are right now mid-year. Thank you.
Miss Bellis.
So on my aspect, I just deal with the grants and the people, the charities, that they request funding from us. And usually I get about 35 requests every year and it increases every year. And yes, we are getting a little additional money and maybe we'll get more with this new bill. But if we commit such a large amount, we're gonna cut out a lot of our events. And then when people do, I mean, there's other things that people can do when they come in, but those are big events for our local people. And I just think it's important to them to keep those, that we help them to keep funding those events.
Mr. Chairman, and to clarify, I'm not against county school fiestas or any of that. I just don't understand how advertising helps bring heads in bed for that. I mean, so that, that's the one that gets, that gets me. So, okay, if our lodger's tax is a one-time thing, we try it, and what we're gonna try is to see if we can find the money somewhere. I, I'm all, I mean, let's leave the, let's abandon the lodger's tax for a little bit for right now, and take out of the box and see where, where else can we have a top road fund?
There we have some, I need to fill out something that we were gonna use, but we want to have sort of a tax aid.
I think so.
The other thing we, me and Loubet discussed is, what we had to place to get it from is the reserves. But that is a slight process, not insurmountable, but it's, we would have to change. It's not identified in our Form S5 under budgets of each year. We have the S4, 5 form that we identify potential projects. And that's where we put the money for the dump truck we just bought, pulled it out of reserves. So we would have to add it to, I believe we would have to add it to reserves and then pull it from reserves and do a DFA resolution to move the money out of reserves, put it into budget. That, that we could do is take it from reserves and we'd have to go through the DFA hoops, but that is possible.
And it's a non-recurring expense, it's something you won't try. We'll give the numbers at the end and see if we'll try it in the future.
So, Mr. Chairman? Yes. How, if we, if we take these monies from reserves, you can still be applying them for $200,000, or would it have to be a lesser amount?
If Taos County made the commitment of $100,000, we could pay that from the lodger's tax that would affect the cash bonds that's in there now. If we did the second route, we should be taking it from reserves, that's taking from the general fund reserves. And so right now, we have negotiations, we have other things going on. It is a one-time expense, granted that, that the $200,000 is a large ask at this time.
So, Miss Loubet, if it does affect races, it does affect other things?
It won't, because it's, yeah, it won't.
Not if it comes from reserves.
Not if it comes from reserves.
How about, I mean, say for example, the Hill and Court House or the Veteran Cemetery, it doesn't affect anything?
Those projects are actually listed on the form despite the Biden projects were used on those monies. So that's why we said we have to adjust that plan to then ask to move the monies from there into actually requested, before that to be...
So, I'm also, sorry, Commissioner, those projects that Commissioner Omero put forth are projects that we would be able to pull from our reserve to help fund them. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we just be adding Taos Air $200,000 to our...
These, these Taos Airs?
Well, these are the other...
Taos House.
Right. Okay. It's, there's, it's, there are many county employees that have second jobs in hotels, in restaurants because they can't, we can't afford to pay them. But this is not what we pay them anyway. If we can use, if we consider to use that reserve, we need to make it crystal clear that it's our one-time buy-in to this, that it's not affecting how we can change, how we could have given people races or otherwise. Because I still support the idea that we need to keep those, those activities, those events with the opportunity to put that in. Heads in beds, Town of Taos gets more heads in beds than the county owner will be. Where we use those people's monies that are in county school requests, of course, via all the way into the police, wherever those requests come from, they pump money into what would be a GRT, that we are gonna have to base a lot of our economic growth as a county to increase that GRT. We can't, you know, we can't continue to increase property tax to do what we're thinking of as a county. We need a versatile way of bringing in revenue. GRTs is one. And all these little activities are, but if we're gonna move forward with an idea of using a reserve, we gotta make it crystal clear to Sheriff's Department that came in here and asked, you were talking about, everyone's gonna wonder what or why we're spending this money. It's clear to us how, and we can see how it would be beneficial, but it's gotta be related to everyone else that's around. So, Commissioner, thank you. Thanks, Jerry. Yeah, you know, I agree, and let's, why can't we use half of our promotional lodger's tax? And then, and then, you know, we'll just have to be more selective. But, you know, I'm not into putting five grand into somebody's website. As much as I like all of these projects, we can, we can help them advertise what they're doing to help keep it going, you know? I don't want to abandon those people, but I think we can be more discerning and selective with, with our use of that money. So, you know, I'm in favor of taking half of our promotional fund and putting it towards this and then using something from reserves to make up whatever else would want to contribute to it. Commissioner, we, we talked about other things that we could work with on our project, property tax percentages increasing, all these other things. If we can make it work on the possibility of using some reserve, I, I'm adamant about keeping all the lodger's tax for these community events. I'm not, I don't, I'm not favorable to using that. We're gonna use, let's use cash reserve, and how much we decide to use to fund that in discussion, I think that's, that's fair for me.
Just for, okay, someone just talked to you said, maybe we should table the discussion and, I don't know, maybe revisit it this afternoon or call for a special meeting? But, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I asked if we scheduled a special meeting to further this discussion in the very near future because I think this is a little time sensitive.
I asked for an extension for Taos Air for March 8, and so I can request if you could do a special session by then.
Take to a non-specific time that will be determined by the chairman, the clerk and the staff.
Okay.
Whenever they can schedule a special meeting.
I'd like to give, I'd like to give presenters an answer today. I think if we can, just like... Okay, so I'd like to take a motion to table items, what was that, 10, 10B for, to be discussed under 16D, this commission wish. Well, we have one more, we have what we need to executive, we gotta come back and do some other things in the center. If we can have further discussion to get this through and maybe staff can find out.
I've been with the discussions, Mr. Chairman. So I would like to hear from management as to how much money more or less may become available. Is it going to be the exact $200,000 or are we gonna look at a lesser amount?
You could probably have that ready by, after executive session. We have the $200,000 if you wanted to do that. But it's not a question, the $200,000 is available in the reserves right now, and you want to go that route?
Considering the situation that our county roads are in, I'm thinking how many possible we could actually cover with $200,000. But, but I recognize your points and the things that you guys want to do with the promotion of this. I guess one of the beefs, and I'm glad Mr. Bellis is here with the Town of Taos, is that there's a lot of things like this, promotional things that happen. And Taos County has never asked in advance about helping out or partaking or participating in these things until the last minute when possibly, you know, maybe the county's a little desperate for more funding. And that's when we finally come to, to the county. The other thing is that we never get the publicity, and I'm not saying the individually, but the county never gets the respect. Say for example, the housing, affordable housing that's gonna be built on Tom Holder Road, or not Tom Holder, but Erner Road. That land was owned by the county and we went through the efforts between the town and the county to make sure that that land was allowed before affordable housing. Recent articles that have come out of Taos news give all of the publicity to the town, but the county got absolutely no mention in it. And it's very unfair to the people of Taos County. I just want to say those things.
Right, I think you can, you can continue that conversation at the commission's announcements. I want to stay focused on the presentation that has been provided for us. There's a motion in a second. It will be later. I appreciate that. Mr. Martinez, would you please call a call?
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Fabro?
Yes.
Chairman Gages?
Yes, one quick question.
Yes.
Do you want the Town of Taos officials, as was Mr. Gordon, to come back?
I respect, but I think they should go back. I think, you know, hopefully we'll have some good news or have some kind of news story, but I think it'd be beneficial if they come back.
How, General?
Yes, Sir General.
I have a motion that the many agenda to hear item 17B. And with that motion, I would like to motion that under the Open Meetings Act exemption 1015, 187, we all went to closed meetings.
Motion is being made by Commissioner Panabo, you are here second. 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 Commissioner Blackenhorn, Mr. Martinez, please call a call.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Chairman Gages?
Yes, for the record, it's 12:43, we're going to the executive session. Thank you. We'll go searching, 20 minutes. We'll do a screening.
Let's go. All right, then, take, Mr. Chairman, a motion, we come back into regular session.
Motion, the second one has been made, Mr. Martinez, please call.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Chairman Gages?
Yes. Report from our legal counsel under closed sessions.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, members of the public, we did go into closed session to discuss the matter identified on the agenda. It was a litigation matter pursuant to the allowance under the Open Meetings Act for closed sessions, and we heard it and took no action.
Commissioners, I did a motion to approve a session for, so, second. Motion is being made, second. Mr. Martinez, please call.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Chairman Gages?
Yes. Entertained motion to reconvene to discussion, consideration decision regarding approval of funding for Taos Air and lodger's tax discussion was tabled.
Motion to bring item 10A back on the table.
Motion, as second, have it made.
1080, I have 10A, I have motion.
10A, you have... 10A, you have it on the table, very second. Very second, as we made it, Mr. Martinez, please call a roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro.
Yes.
Chairman Gagos.
Yes, all right, Commissioners, we will get some permission, uh, manager, Mr. Arneil, thinking outside the box.
So, um, one, uh, Commissioners, we can take the money from lodger's tax, a dollar amount if you need, or we can take a smaller amount and supplement that with money from the general fund, one, you can do it from reserves, or from the revenues that we're bringing in right now, right now, we're, uh, a little, we're above board on our projected revenues. Uh, Ms. Martinez went through the numbers while we were in executive session, so there is availability in general fund revenues to increase the revenue side to offset whatever we give to Taos Air. So, in a sense, you have four options, one, flat out give money from lodger's tax, one is a combination, second is a combination of lodger's tax and either reserves or general fund revenues, or the third option is general fund, reserves, and the fourth is take it from our revenues that are, are coming in pretty well during this fiscal year. And we personally are recommending taking it from the excess revenues that are coming in currently, we might not have those next year, but, uh, we can sustain any, uh, our general, our gross receipts taxes are coming in well, and Ms. Martinez can talk further to this.
Commissioner Fabro, I'm ready to make a motion. I make a motion that we provide funding for the Taos Air as presented, and the means being the additional surplus GRT from this year's revenue projections and the balance coming from reserves and leaving lodger's tax intact.
I'll make a second, but I want clarification, Mr. Martinez, recommendation to get, was it, use the excess revenues?
Excess revenues that we're currently, uh, receiving right now, so, right now, uh, Ms. Martinez projects that we have, uh, what's the dollar?
You're talking about the lodger's tax?
No, not the lodger's tax, the other revenues.
GRTs, above projection.
So during the second quarter review, that was the greatest of the administration that we had, sure, the 50% mark that we were at, Taos County was a little bit higher at that time, considering that we are with lodger's, through our, um, property tax revenue, so it's comfortable to use it from the general fund, revenues that we are receiving access, there is about $300,000 of excess monies right now in the general fund, that, that should be good to the investment strategies that we does in our treasury office, those investments that comes in the market, we're going to have for the CD to the market accounts.
And then the rest would come from, it's like part of the reserve, that was my motion.
How much did you say, was checked?
Okay, so there is a second further discussion. I do have a discussion, some discussions as well, I do feel, um, this is, this is a great way of supporting, 200,004 is a little much for me to swallow, I don't know if there would be a friendly amendment to consider that. What, what 100,000 dollars, we're, we're break, the idea of getting this together as, I mean, this is my opinion, so I'm just asking for the commission, but I also want to talk to folks that are represented today, that what 100,000, I know it's not their full amount, but I, you know, I feel very cautious, there's other things that we definitely need to set precedents in, representing a lot of our infrastructure, that I wouldn't want to use all this money.
And Mr. Chairman, there was not a dollar amount associated with that motion, so you would be allowed to offer.
Okay, let's hear it.
Yes. Um, what it means is I have three days to find another 140,000 dollars.
Maybe we can ask Chair Carson. I, you know, I don't know, I don't know who else to ask, and I'm not just making my recommendation to skirt this, this work, can approve the whole 200 request or not, um, I just, I know that there's things that, infrastructure-wise, uh, that we need, we should, not always, I mean, maybe the success is that this, uh, this endeavor has promoted and increased our GRT, that's probably a big reason why this cloud business come through. I just think that we do have a lot of things that we still need to take care of internally and infrastructure-wise, that I could not say a full 200 would be my support, any support, just a moment.
Um, and obviously, this is a program, the idea is at the end of the 13 weeks, we can all look at our numbers and say that they increased considerably both GRTs and lodger's tax due to this effort that, you know, that we've all done, so, I mean, that's, that is the idea. I do want to bring up, uh, another thing is, the Senate Bill 106 that was passed, um, eliminating the exemption G on lodger's tax goes into effect July 1st, which means the entire state of New Mexico, anybody who's doing, um, short-term rental are required to pay lodger's tax, and the projection is for Taos County is going to collect between 150,000 dollars more next year because of that effort, um, that a number of us were really behind, and we tried to get it passed last year. So, in combination with the Airbnb's collection that you guys are getting, and then this SB 106 that was passed, um, that's not kind of, not even working on this cooperative marketing efforts that we have, so I do expect that next year, your lodger's tax will increase considerably, um, and of course, then our GRTs will, because of all of these different things that we're doing.
Commissioner, tell me what's personal, Mr. Blackenhorn.
So, yeah, I, I, I think we are going to collect more next year, and, um, and hopefully we can contribute again to Taos Air next year, I know you can go after some grants and various things, and we're not really sure exactly how it's going to shake out for next year, but, um, I think that in doing this, you know, you can only should be looking at this as a, um, potentially recurring for, for some time. Um, I've, I've never understood why it was proportioned the way it was, you know, 200 for the town, 200 for the county, town gets four times as much lodger's tax as we do, the county, the town's budget is built on gross receipts tax, our budget is built 80% on, on profit tax, and, and, you know, I know we'll get some benefit from that, um, going forward, but, you know, the direct injection is, is just not as much there for us, so, but, you know, I'm a big supporter of this, and, and I'd like administration to find 150,000, make the job a little bit easier, um, but I, I also sympathize with the, uh, the chairman and his concerns.
The, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Thorpe.
I guess in, in the way it's proportioned, I actually have the questions that, if Taos Ski Valley is going to benefit from at least 50 to 60% of this, but they're only paying 35,000 into this particular area.
For this summer program, they wouldn't benefit from it because that, I mean, they, the people who came, uh, at least 50% of the people that came were, were skiing, scary, obviously isn't up in the summer, so we expect that that's going to transition to all the other recreation, um, opportunities that we have, including rafting and fishing and, you know, all those other things, so, um, that's why their, their money is lower, and they, I believe they only have one hotel that's open for the summer, and that's the Blake Hotel, if I'm not mistaken.
So, yeah, that's kind of proportioning it into lodger's tax again, which makes sense, I mean, you know, your argument is that Taos Ski Valley shouldn't have to pay as much because they don't really get that much from lodger's tax in the summer, but you can see that it's, it's similar for us in a way, you know.
Well, it, it promotes them, even if there's no smaller amount.
Well, the great thing about Taos Air is it's just Taos Air, not Taos Ski Valley Air.
Right.
But that's good.
It's got the Taos Ski Valley logo on it.
Yes, Commissioner. So regarding infrastructure, SRS funding has been secured for the next four years, and Pilt has already secured for this year, and, and we will be receiving approximately 38,000 additional, so I think our infrastructure needs probably, um, with the way we've built our budget around infrastructure and capital based on those two, hopefully we're going to be okay. We have had the discussion of how to get sustainable GRT, because of the difference that we need, since we can't do better in our collections and we're, in our evaluations, I guess, and we can't increase our property tax coming in, so the other side that we've got to do on this is we've got to find additional sustainable GRT, and even Commissioner O'Donnell agreed to that concept innovation, we've got to try something. We, we know we have two other family dollar stuff coming probably in the future, I'd be willing to bet, I don't know that for sure, but, you know, those two, that's, that's not a new GRT, that's somebody that's not going to drive as far to family dollars, so that's, we're not getting additional GRT, so that's going to do absolutely nothing for us, in my opinion. So, with that said, we need to find ways, we, we've got to try something to get additional GRTs if we're going to have a pay plan, if we're going to do some other stuff, it's, since we're, obviously, we're just happy with what we're doing with our, our property tax, we're not going to do any extra to increase that, so it's up to us to figure out sustainable GRT, and this is at least something we can try.
Well, Chairman, you know, I mean, let's use the 150 from these excess, and then, again, I would go back to, uh, taking another 50 from lodgers', and then we still have the opportunity to support those groups, and then Corina wouldn't have to work so hard, uh, so anyway, that's, that's my final suggestion, and, but I will support anything that, uh, makes us a player in this, very important.
Joe, can we, can Taos County support the question?
I, I think, I would, yes, and you know, I, what's supposed to be here? Uh, so we need to get, we need to get, uh, direction to the administration vote.
So my motion was?
So, do we want to fund the full 200, do we want to fund partially? The motion was to support Taos Air, uh, through various funds.
We, Mr. Chairman, it's my opinion that we don't apply the 200.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just answer the question on your portion, if you look at the economic study we gave you, it's based on GRTs and lodger's tax, and while you don't, you as the county government don't benefit a lot from hotels, municipalities kind of eat the lion's share of that, you get, if, if a river, or the town, or anybody gets a dollar of GRT, you get an equal amount of GRT for that, so on the GRT side, you're, you're the largest beneficiary.
Which was, why come?
Okay, so motion.
I did?
So, is it a motion?
Yes, to grant that a 200 dollar. Okay, I'll amend my motion to take 150 from the additional revenue that was non-budgeted, so non-budgeted revenue, the other 50, in my opinion, I'm from reserves, that's my motion. And the lodger's tax intact.
Second, motion is second, have it made, Ms. Martinez, please call a roll.
Commissioner Omero.
A no.
Commissioner Blackenhorn.
Yep.
Commissioner Fabro.
Yes.
Chairman Gagos.
Yes, I, you know, and I hope that, uh, you know, this is part of the conversations that we've had, using governmental entities to work together, drive to make it more sustainable valuable economy in the area. We as a county do support a lot of the local projects that go on, and ask that the town could equally support, if we pump 150,000, 120,000 dollars into all these little programs, one thing that I've known from, from participating and supporting projects is we give all these little local, um, events crumbs, and they continue to come and ask for more crumbs because we don't support them enough, so maybe between the town and the county, we look at all these projects that come up, and jointly make a good valid effort to get these folks to not continue to keep asking for more crumbs, and be able to be self-sustaining, so we can use lodger's tax on other things, and it'd be great to use lodger's tax next year for a huge marketing, but we, we, we try to support all these locals because they're the ones that 99% of the time provide all the GRT and things that we do.
For Mr. Chairman to explain the reason I said to keep the lodger's tax intact is, it's ongoing right now, these people haven't had the chance to realize that maybe part of the funding could come to an end, I'm hoping that the bill that Corina talked about does bring extra money, so we can take a part out of that next time, but the people coming to Valerie's Committee that we appointed expect those same amounts, and so that's why I was not in favor of changing that, because it would be too big a hardship on the committee and what she works hard to, to sustain, so that's why my two forms of funding were what they were.
All right, so you're going to offer, you're going to drop some money?
I did want to offer something, and that is that I met with your, your manager, requested, and he and I are going to work out for next month a proposal, um, that now that we have this JPA, so that, um, the town has a ton of tents and lighting systems and stages and those portable bathrooms and everything, so that people don't have to ask for so much money, we're going to try to coordinate that under this JPA, that we can share that around the enchanted circle, so everybody doesn't have to buy all that kind of equipment for their events, we can just.
Healing the ill for me is a lot, and that would save you a lot of money, but don't go to billing at the end like what happened to the town of Taos when I was in question, they came and helped us with the water, and they came to the little event, that's, that's all water, that's all water, so, thank you guys, very much.
Thank you, I wanted to say that, yeah, it means a lot to me as a community member, because I don't think a lot of people understand, um, what they see is the county and the town as two big players in this community, and to be able to support this better, it's going to be really great for, for everyone, so thank you.
Well, we, you know, for, for more individuals, privately and publicly, uh, businesses to invest into our county, we just do some support, you know, and the gentleman that purchased the skier didn't have to, and he invested a lot, I think that we as a community, there's a lot of employees that probably take, take a good check home, we need to continue to support, we just need to continue to keep our eyes open and make sure that we don't be.
And if you heard one thing during this Commissioner Omero's conference, it's probably what we went to executive session. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe.
Mr. Arneil.
Chairman, the last thing in closing is that next commission meeting will have at least two DFA resolutions that will make it considered, that'll make up the funding for this.
Okey-dokey, we've got that, thank you guys, thank you. Next item is item, well, this is department matters, items A through C, I have.
Benjamin, 11A.
Oh, my bad, my bad. Hampton, thank you, uh, Commissioner Fabro for seeing that, I felt I had to squint my eyes on my, my, my. So I made a discussion consideration decision regarding the approval resolution 2019-12 authorizing a directing publication of the title, a general summary and time, date and meeting place for discussion, consideration action upon proposal ordinance, ordinance 2019-2, this is establishing Taos County Fire Code Ordinance incorporating the 2015 International Fire Code. Mr. Cordova and Mr. Hampton are here, so Mr. Arneil will take this stage.
Uh, Mr. Hampton was here earlier, uh, he was supposed to be, and he had no public information officer training. Mr. Hampton was here earlier. He was supposed to be. He had no public information officer training. So he missed the majority of that training this morning to be here with us. This is just a procedural thing, which is a resolution authorization, authorizing publication twice in Taos news for the ordinance that Chief Cordova talked about in the last meeting regarding fire martial codes, adopting fire martial codes. So I do recommend approval of this resolution. You will hear it will not be public hearing in our second meeting in April regarding adopting fire martial codes.
Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash twelve authorizing and directing publication of the title, summary, time, date, date, place regarding ordinance two thousand nineteen dash two establishing the fire code.
Second, Mr. Martinez, any discussion, competition? No discussion. Mr. Martinez, please call roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhard.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Chairman Geikos.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is item four. Department Matters, and we have A through C. Item A is discussion consideration decision regarding amended and three-state joint powers agreement for Taos regional landfill, Mr. Amiel and Vice Chair Raffin.
Deputy Chairman, before you, you have amended JPA that the landfill ordinance directly that each of the government bodies approved. Nothing's changed. Legal has reviewed it and nothing's changed since JPA where we previously have. We just want to update it.
Commissioners, a second, motion is second half of the name. Mr. Martinez, please call roll.
Sorry, Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhard.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Chairman Geikos.
Yes.
I do forget.
We've been waiting for you anyway. It's been a long wait. Nobody's eating lunch. And we, discussion consideration decision regarding the adoption of Camino Tortuga, Camino Ramasul, yacan yar de Veronica, possibly three point nine miles of district one of the first department. Mr. Arceco is out.
He might still be, he'll be there. Just texted. I'm all for Mr. Arceco. That's why I put it there.
You need it?
Yeah, I was just passing it out to the commission. And the road viewers committee, down in your seats from, I don't know. So the road viewers committee consisting of Alexa Beta, David Romero, Jimmy Romero did go out on March first and reviewed Camino de Artica, Camino Veronica, and Camino.
Ramasul.
Ramasul. And it's their recommendation that we adopt these three roads and to be effective, April first. And that's where the show made done. Mr. Yarmitz, we're here as well, wanted to stand in support of this.
Okey-dokey.
Commissioners, so what will Mr. Chairman cost to maintain them or what do you think about?
Well, these particular roads, there's, they're already up to county standards. So right now, there's ongoing maintenance costs of adding those roads.
And to bring that up? Motion to approve the road viewers regulation. Second, motion is second half of the made. Any further discussion? Here we are. Mr. Martinez, please call roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhard.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Chairman Geikos.
Yes. You have a road bound to be engaged three point nine miles more. Commissioner Romero wasn't here. We just mentioned to him that it had met or exceeded county levels. There's not, there's not much to bring him to. Just have some signage, a little bit of grayish. Great, that's it. Great. Thank you. You may have just been timed for the guest. So next item is I have seen discussion on post policy change with, you know, if anyone such as Park Scott Frost, who's the director, he also was here, but it's a name.
Curry, right now, he's at the conference appointment. That started, wasn't there? He had an opening table. He does, he has some bullet points that he wanted to discuss with you since the body is a policymaking body. He wanted to come back with you so for some, maybe to change up the policy regarding if anyone such as Park. So that's what he wanted to talk to him is bullet points. He does, they should increase the revenues on there. Ms. Martinez, to my left, would testify that we've lost money, lost few years for anyone such as Park. As you may recall, we did have that one month, the Ted Carson bill of sixteen thousand for electrical. So we need to do something to offset that. We're not saying to gouge the nonprofits or anything like that. There is organizations that are making money off of the, off the, off field. So take a look at those bullet points. We can have Mr. Frost come here for next meeting. So if you have any concerns, please email me or contact me and we can. And I don't know if this has any traction either. That was my complaint for, well, Scott's like, what? You can see there was a desire from the commission to see by increasing revenues.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just run over forty tournaments and I've never made a penny off. A few figures at a time. Mr. Silva, Mr. Marcus, myself, who's been promoting that, bringing lodger tax for the town, of course, and GRT. I did a, I did a study once, maybe, well, the commissioners, of the Corona tournament that I used to run. And I took ten out-of-town teams and two local teams and asked them, each team member, to keep track of expenses, things they paid while they were here. There was over four hundred thousand dollars that was spent by the team members from out of town and local, taking half the field. Was my formula about that. I didn't make anything on that. Mr. Silva doesn't make anything on that. And neither does, I don't know about Mr. Marcus. That's the one I don't know. So, you know, but the Mother's Day thing, I understand, is in our part this year. There's a good source of revenue.
Point taken. Commissioner Fambro, maybe we enter some kind of agreement that if you say those heads and those beds are beneficial to town, GRT benefits the town, why do we still have to keep Camino? Just at an average, you look at, if there's twenty teams, they may be home from each division, forty dollars a player, four hundred dollars a team, there's some revenue that's made. But what you do, nobody would continue to do it for this amount of years just for dedication. And I do agree that there's opportunity for Mr. Silva, that he's doing this as a benefit. If we could erase those fees, would he be able to make that money and give it back to whatever programs he wants to? But I do want to see us see the opportunity generally at least break even, that we can, that we can continue to do this. But so I would like to see what Mr. Frost says. I think it's important for him to go present that just.
Well, my nephew, if he ever gets out of the hospital, so their building, he wants us to change the light. Be a significant change in some other stuff.
Yeah, when, maybe Mr. Chuleta was here, we were looking two hundred thousand plus just for each ball field. I can have that memory correct, but I think when he looked into it, he just didn't have the cash at that time. And that is our biggest expense of the ball field is the electricity.
Well, we can do with less lights, with more efficient lights.
Right, right, but yeah.
We can get John Don Maro, senior, some of those people that don't have.
So we'll go ahead and.
We'll wait, sorry.
We'll have Mr. Frost come back and present that to more than just you. Thank you, Mr. Amiel. What we want to item thirteen, this is the agenda. Commissioners, before you, these items on the agenda we go. I believe for the supporting of all items with the one vote, these items listed are for the commission's consideration and decisions. We have items A through B, all of which we read through them. And the commission can review as a question. I made DFA resolution number twenty-three for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year, requesting the increase of expenditures of the E nine one central communication fund from the cash reserves to cover the general liability premium dues. Mr. Martinez is available. I have B as approval of DFA resolution number twenty-four, two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year, requesting to increase the revenues and expenditures according to amendment one of the contract of two thousand eighteen dash nineteen sixty-eight zero five two by and between Taos County and both central district development, non-metro area agency aging for an increase to the nutrition services and program. Item C is approval budget adjustment of Pocket Works Fund oh two oh four dash sixteen hundred allocate budget for the purchase of a whole mix identified during the budget review. Item D is approval budget adjustment for County Attorney Fund oh one oh one dash ten twenty cover costs for legal services being quiet to Taos County. Item E is approval of budget adjustment of County Complex Fund thirty-four oh one dash seventeen sixteen to cover the initial expenditure related to the purchases of a new phone system for Taos County's complex. Item F is approval of the budget adjustment, Rio Fernando Fire District Fund oh two oh nine dash fifteen fifty eight to allocate sufficient fund budget for the purchase of a new water tender. Item G is approval of the budget adjustment for Honda Cycle Fire District Fund oh two oh six dash fifteen fifty four to allocate significant budget for the maintenance of a CPR machine. Item H is approval of budget adjustment, Fire Protection Fund oh two oh nine mid-year adjustments, part one, to cover operating expenses through fiscal year for various fire districts. Item I is approval of the budget adjustment, Fire Protection Fund oh nine oh two mid-year adjustment, part two, to cover operating expenses through the fiscal year for various fire districts as well. Item J is approval of budget adjustment, Fire Excise Tax Fund zero two 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 mid-year adjustments, part one, to cover operating expenses through the fiscal year and the various fire districts as well. K is approval budget adjustment, Solid Waste Fund oh two oh two dash sixteen ten to allocate sufficient budget for operating expenses through the fiscal year. Item L is decision, consideration, I mean discussion decision, discussion, consideration decision on waiver of conflict of interest for representation, consultation, disclosure, informed consent from Randy. How do we, Rodney, what's that, Dick, Dak, Dick, Sloane, Aiken, and Rob P. A., Randy Artio, Contract Attorney. Commissioners, I have read on the set agenda. I need to glasses.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve all of those items that you just read, items A through L. I just wanted to get the update on item E with regards to our phone system.
So I'll approve Mr. Allen's second. Commissioner Romero, motion to approve A through D, F through L, consent agenda is ready.
With discussion of item E, correct?
Correct.
Motion is second half of the made. Please, please.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhard.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Chairman Geikos.
Yes. Commissioner Romero, we have item E. This is the County Complex Fund thirty-four oh one dash seventeen sixteen cover initial expenditure into purchases of a new phone system for Taos County's complex. We have Ms. Martinez and.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, the phone system has been ordered. It should be here by the end of next week. It's just now listed, covered initial down payment of the new phone system. So we're purchasing a hundred and ninety phones. Check is going to be mailed out today, FedEx actually, so they can receive it by tomorrow. They just need to get a phone company where they're shipping the phones after they receive payment. It's an expense that we had budgeted for and it's, we're going out in week four and packing our phones. And so then we've tried to move it post haste, written that. And if there's any money questions, who can answer those questions?
So right now, when someone is calling, say, for example, assessors or planning, how do those phone calls go?
Those phone calls go up to NISA and then NISA can transfer down to the, to the county line. The elected officials will transfer those calls. If it's something for solid waste administration, she takes the phone message and then calls Molecia. And Molecia has to return that phone call. Same, same situation here, just returning those calls. So, yeah, so the incoming call, NISA will take that phone message and then either give it to the cell networks and apply to the, there's a chat where they help them to answer the call.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, last week, I believe I had seen a memo that the lines have been bribed pretty much due to surges from Kid Carson Electric Corp. Is that correct?
Well, Mr. Mandina feels that the phone service was bribed. He asked where he plugged everything into from a power surge. Did we know it's from Kid Carson? No, we don't. It could be bad wiring or something faulty within the system as well. So we, we can't blame Kid Carson. We don't know that for a fact.
What we didn't do that too?
I did talk to an engineer, the commissioner, an electrical engineer to look into it because there has been a lot more power surges than there has been some things that when our system goes down in here, the commission meeting, that's one of the first questions we asked, was there a power surge last night? Because that would throw off the system. Besides touching that box.
Yes, breathing, that's clear.
Yeah.
I'm not, I guess, minimalist, I actually, engineers, we can get somebody in and having to do transformers. There was a conversation about if transformers had to be replaced. I don't know if that is an issue or not an issue, but if you want to find that out, just to.
And I think that's another reason, that is another reason why we bring in a electrical engineer because we have that whole issue with the large power scene with Kid Carson. And we need to do a lot of vision on it. Right now, what they, what Taos County manager tells me is it doesn't matter. If we leave all the lights on, we're better off. We leave all the lights on in the building because that lowers the bill. And the triad is served by the bill goes up because we're not, we're not, we're not pumping that amount of electricity. For example, I directed Mr. Frost and Mr. Amiel, Roberto, to turn off the lights in the buildings. If you came in here on Saturday and Sunday, the automatics wrong. And also to me said about perception that we're just wasting electricity here. And it really didn't have no effect on the bill, but the perception out there, maybe you guys heard that we're wasting the power here.
Definitely things that, that you can update the commission on. Means to come is getting consultant, electrical engineer, see what could be the issue. Check those, those usage and check those transformers, see what could be that thing. Commissioner, I don't think I have any other concerns or other further questions. Then we can move for approval of item P in the set agenda motion. I have, here, motion is, and the second is second half of the made. Motion, item, motion is second, second half been made. Can we go ahead and do a roll call?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Chairman Geigels?
Yes, yes. Yes, item 14 is a adjustment of board appointments. Now that Mr. Cordova is no longer available for us at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I would ask that the commission, where we discussed this before, to, I would like Lupe to be, uh, going to be finance subcommittee, which would actually, see I'm the finance subcommittee member as House County's rep, but we have obviously no more of the budget stuff. So we really just need item C and then that would be worked out between me and Lupe if she agrees to do that.
Okay, so item B would be?
And I'm actually the member, I found out at the meeting last week, but if my subcommittee is Taos County's rep, but the annual handle is my alternate, so I would like that same arrangement.
So item A, also this, this move down, but item A would be, instead of Mr. Cordova, we put this?
Yeah, you put Lupe there and A, we don't need to go down C.
Okay.
This is already there. Okay, I mean technically, but we can go down.
Let's, let's just put out an item.
Okay. I ask that the commission consider Lupe to be the, um, finance subcommittee board member in my absence.
That's the form of the motion?
Yes.
I'll second. Motion is second half been made. Uh, this, the discussion is, I mean, to happen in a second?
Correct, but finance subcommittee is a little bit long.
Oh, also no way to get winners?
No, I do that once a month.
Cool, no, no.
They all meet for the regular.
Uh, Mr. Martinez, please call over.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Chairman Geigels?
Yes. Item B, discretion selection of member of regional coalition, uh, board. Please, Mr. Cordova. We wish, I would recommend that the, uh, who's the alternate?
That's not my idea.
Cadis, Commission Vice Chair O'Donnell is the alternate. Item B4, uh, we could also, I wish I was then, Tom.
No, I'm sure you can have it.
Do you think Mr. Hamidio, you'd be interested, or should I just follow up?
That's fine, if the commissioner wanted to take the seat off, I'll do it.
I'll move that we appoint our county manager, uh, second. In this position.
Mr. Martinez, can we please call as a train?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Chairman Geigels?
Yes. Item C is discretion selection of alternate for being hold.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I ask that in the form of the motion, that Lupe be my alternate for NCR TV for.
I'll second. This would bring out.
She will do, she definitely will when I go.
Good, motion is second half been made. Do we have a roll call, Mr. Martinez?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Chairman Geigels?
Yes. Next item, item D, discretion selection of alternate Taos County Economic Development Council to replace Lupe. We have the Cordova, we do have, uh, Commissioner Blackenhorn as a member. To be alternate. So, all right, I'll make a motion for the chairman of the meeting. I'll second, motion is second half been made. Mr. Martinez, call over.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Chairman Geigels?
Yes. Next item is item 15, the county managers report. This is an update to the commission on various items affecting Taos County. We have newly accounted manager.
Did he bring the wages, that's all? With this day. Trackers, Randy stole from us.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Because I'll start with what I just passed out. This is something that I created a few years ago in case you enjoyed to use it. It's something that I called a tracking form. And this is some of the projects that have, uh, that were oriented to the commission and to staff. And I don't know if this body's interested in seeing such a form, at least on a once a month basis. But I know a lot of you ask, well, where are we at with Old County Courthouse? This would be something that I kind of, the same information will go to everybody when it's updated and then a lot of this information I would have to also get from the staff member. That's kind of what I broke up into project or tasking. The department, what's the priority level for the county? When's the due date? Responsible staff member, does any legal review? What's the status, comments, and date of completion? The bottom half here had, uh, projects that we'd already completed, so they've moved within the, within the list. It's just a Excel spreadsheet. So I'm not sure if this is something that you guys would like to see, uh, from me as far as a report. It's something I thought, uh, uh, we could, I could do for you all. So we'll come in.
She's telling me that her notes was correct, registered, he, so I will take work from the council.
And then I thought about trying to take out some of this stuff, but I thought, oh, let it just suddenly gone because there's some of this stuff here, that we talked about over the last three, four years. And I thought, wow, we're still working on some of this stuff, so.
It's good to see. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I really appreciate this, because it tells us where things are standing. And if you can do this on a monthly basis, that's even much more appreciated. Because quite often we get asked by our constituents as to where things are and sometimes we don't know. Especially for those of us who don't spend as much time here. So I, I appreciate this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Commissioner Blackenhorn, do you have any?
No, I agree with, with Mr. Romero. Thank you, Brandon.
Commissioner Fabro?
Hi.
Hi. Do you have anything for Mr. Hamidio on what he's?
I suppose.
I just felt that we couldn't.
That's just another way to express it. You know, it's not fair.
This is, this is, uh, 2018, 2017. And so I printed it out last night. I'm sure you guys are interested in this and, uh...
Do you think, gosh, I feel that it would make, uh, would help or not make help against it to you to put, uh, what could possibly be, uh, responsibilities by the commission? I know that these, everybody have responsible members and staff members, but if there's any of these projects that come up that we may, that we as a commission could possibly hold it back and get completed. Just like in AP hospital, you look at, um, item issues that are either more directly responsibilities to change ordinances or, or policies so that they can take, you can move that up or, or item. Are any of these things that possibly come up that maybe, um, need debate because of the commission's platform? Holding or giving staff direction?
I don't think there's anything that we have on this list that's getting held up by the commission. So I don't, of the projects that I know of, they're nothing when the commission is, is holding up staff.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with regards to the complex, the parking lot, what, um, what were the rocks that, on that particular one?
And actually, this one did get done. This is two years ago. And that's why the, we got that blockage color. We put a crack, uh, fog seal over the parking lot. We're already at this point where we already need to do a crack seal on it again. So this front parking lot as well as the back is already, so. And I know when it was more of a, just a fog seal, but now there's cracks coming up. So something that we're going to address. So moving on with my report, uh, something I want to caution the commission on, Dumber, Moscolonia's Neighborhood Overday is nearing completion from the staff perspective and planning. So we will be coming to a hearing sometime in April with it. So we should be able to interview with a schedule, a possible hearing date. I also want to caution the commission to talk to anybody about it because you guys will be a quasi judicial.
What's this?
The upper Moscolonia's Neighborhood Overday Zone. So I caution you guys to discuss him with anybody right now. And, uh, also tomorrow, Richard Sanchez is a contractor for the Ice Center. We're going to be doing a pre-construction conference. The deadline to finish Ice Center renovations is August 1st. And so it's a tight window. And we told the chairman that it needs to get done by August 1st. That way we can be ready for the county fair, which is two weeks after that. The name of the contractor, it was? RBC, uh, RBC. I was getting it wrong because I was wanting to call it Anisa, but that was a long hit. So we'll get, the notice to proceed has been issued on that as well. On Thursday, we'll be meeting with our engineer, Mr. Beta, on the plans for Camino, the Med, the Yost, and La Marana Road. He already has, uh, he's partially done with the design for La Marana Road.
That's the one in my district.
That's one in your district.
I think they all have it.
And then, uh, and then also we're going to be meeting on Camino de Medio to get that project ready for the overday. This is the one where we do have approximately $700,000 to do our portion of Medio. I'll be going out to District 5 to see a possible project. We're also waiting to hear back from the Water Association regarding, uh, the El Salto Road project. We do want some, I want something in writing that they're, where they are with their water distribution. So I asked Commissioner Romero to give me that. Dominic had, uh, was called by, uh, DFA for some possible funding. So we're in line to receive funding through the state for our five new workstations. So currently we have three that we purchased and then we have a fourth. And now we have going to five workstations. And that's going to be free grant money from the state. So we're on a list there where we feel confident that we're going to get those workstations. The move from Herne to the old arboretum is almost complete. I think all this left, right now is moving the office equipment and furniture. All the mechanical stuff has been moved over. But to thank our clerk for accommodating us, we have started some of the, our items in her section of the building. So we're almost ready to vacate Herne. There's only one outstanding issue, uh, is what to do with the old building? If we just completely abandon it, put that out to some kind of bid for somebody to tear it down or we tear it down ourselves and use it, sell the metal or, uh, or keep it for ourselves? You've purchased, Ernie, Mr. Cordova said we were going to tear it down and keep it. Couple of contractors think it's more expensive for us to tear it down and re-direct it versus being just putting it out to bid and having the contractor pay us for it. So I just kind of wanted to get your, your thoughts on where to go with it. If you guys want us to try to keep it for ourselves, we'll do that. If you want us to put it out to some form of bid for a contractor to tear it down and then us receive the proceeds.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if we are to tear it down, we would have to hire someone to tear it down, to take it down?
Right.
And that would include having to take down all of the plumbing, uh, electricity? And what else?
There's plumbing, there's, say, water and sewer and the, and the electricity, so.
So the building itself did not transfer with the deed to the town?
No. And?
Taos there?
Yeah.
And so before we, the property already belongs to the, to the town and I think they've already passed it on. Before we officially vacate it and look to pass in that direction of the building, uh, it could be some sort of asset and might be able to generate a little bit of money off of it.
Like $200,000?
Yeah. You can, you can toolify commissioners to have somebody go in and demo it. They would probably shut the waters, shut the electricity off. Do a complete demo and scrap it or somebody wants to piece it out and build it somewhere else. It depends on what those, what those bids would be, but it would be at no cost to the commission. Knowing that we generate a little bit of revenue with low labor cost. So I, I think that's a great way of us, having somebody to be paid, to demo and re-direct it somewhere else, where we can just make some money out of it. Give up our heads and just put a bid by 30 days to get it to the level.
It's not anything that we could use somewhere else?
We could reuse it. Originally our plan was to reuse it next door. Later on, there's zoning issues directing the building. And, uh, we just thought about the cost of being prayer than we would have January 20. Well, we went January 20, the vaults was probably ended by new vaults, but the steel girders and, and all that, we would, uh, we would have to January 20 and make a blueprint of how it needs to be erected. The sheeting on the building, I'm told it would be better for us just to break that out and buy new sheeting for the building versus try and say this old one that it'll be too inefficient for us to use the same sheeting.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yeah, I probably doesn't make any sense to try to resurrect it anywhere. It costs too much money. So the choice is either what the chairman suggested or just leave it to the contractor. But if we didn't want to ask for it at all, if you think we can get some, if you think we can get some money out of it to, to contract that way and have somebody else take the responsibility, then, uh, that would be fine. But it does put a little bit of a time pressure on us to get it done. Whereas if we just passed it with the land, then it becomes Mr. Crozier's problem. I don't think he's too thrilled about that. I haven't talked to him or anything, but, uh, but he would probably make it happen. So that's, that's the choice before us. I would just defer to administration.
Commissioner Black, I mean, Commissioner Black. We learned from those cordless bridges or trying to reuse steel for something that has life safety considerations is, uh, it's a tough way to do it. And I say put a big red bow on it and send a card to Beroni and say, congrats town. You didn't ask for this to help us out.
We can get some publicity from that one, here?
It'll be birthday day. There are some proposed ideas, I guess, which are immediately put back with possibilities.
One makes more sense.
Okay, well, we'll look into the next couple of days and I'll let you guys know.
Whatever costs the least.
I'm going to get a hard round of town.
So we already discussed the phone system. We'll be posting for the position of Human Resources Director. And we'll be also posting for the position of Deputy County Manager as well. We're, our next meeting, our internal auditors will be here. We wanted them on the fifth, Perry County beat us by a day in getting them here. So our auditors will be here next meeting. UNM Taos will be here in next meeting to discuss the Philato Building. So they've already committed to that. Again, they want to use that as a daycare, uh, set. Again, they want to use that as a daycare center, uh, be, uh...
Early childhood, uh, child development, training.
Right. So, uh, they'll be here next meeting. Um, Mr. Cordova, uh, his way out the door did sign a retention bonus memo for the ADC employees, since we've been down, uh, nine to 13 employees that I showed work on. Uh, Ms. Martinez was asked if she could find a way to give those employees a pat on the back on the charity wise. And this is working with the auditors, this is, was their solution. And it will be taxable, it's a one-time event, and it's not going to, um, affect their para. And it is also based on their length that they've been with the detention center. And if they do leave, they, they are responsible for paying it back. So there is a contract that they will have to sign. And so, uh, I just wanted to bring that to your detention. Um, they were pretty happy. Myself, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Lopez, did go to a meeting at the detention center on Friday afternoon, and and we did speak to this, and we answered some of the other questions regarding the compensation plan. And we also did tell them that we are working hard and trying to recruit, um, employees. Part of that recruitment effort that you might hear about is we're going to go to the criminal justice classes at UNM Taos, and they're going to allow us to go into the classes and speak about becoming to work for the county as a detention officer. So we're just happy, I really think that's like the box on this one. Um, the engineer, I have not got the final engineering report, but it was emailed, and the structural analysis has been completed for this side, so me and Ms. Martinez will be sitting down with the engineer. This is, uh, in the next, uh, either by next Friday, probably, they would sit down with the engineer. So I'll come back to you with what their analysis was. Uh, we're also, the engineers have also completed their analysis on New Mexico 150. That's the hill, that's the state highways you drop down from the Rojo side over to the Valdes Valley before you go up into, uh, the Taos Ski Valley. That side of the hill is cutting down, similar to what's kind of happening in the canyon. So we are talking about shop creding that, the side of the hill. And we'll probably come back to you on another commission meeting, the preliminary costs of shop creding it, uh... Where is it?
Is this on your tab or our tab?
It's, uh, about $150,000 to shop credit. I can all set this out to you all. This is something that we're going to have to work with the state on this. The state feels it's our responsibility since the runoff is cutting off the hill. And, uh, the local guys have been good at working with, uh, it's Leo's Road is, uh, is, uh, the, uh, the road above New Mexico 150. And that's where like the Valencia's live, Leo Valencia, different known with them. Martinez Road, where Moistness has some property in that area as well. Uh, and they're also looking about, I don't know, cabling on the tops, so the, uh, money comes off of our county roads, it's the cable that'll go over, uh, to 150. So this is where we've said in the past we'd like, also, Taos Ski Valley Inc. to help with the lobbying with this, to help get the state to pay their portion of this. We feel part of it's the state's responsibility. So, uh, something that, uh, well, me and, uh, Mr. Cordova have visited with Mr. Stag about, and, uh, by using their lobbying arm with the state. And we've also talked to our representative and Solos consocially about this as well. And that's all I have on my list, it's time for any questions.
The state highway department, uh, with regards to the road conditions going into Taos and out of Taos. Uh, the road's just deteriorating, and I know last week they filled a few opus here and there, but it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse.
True.
The, the other thing that I have noticed is that, uh, over the weekend, some pretty huge boulders came down on the Rio Arriba side, but they, they, they've actually bent and stretched that fencing that they put up on the hill. And, um, I, I'm not sure that the state highway is quite taking it as serious as most drivers through that road is, but it's getting more and more dangerous. Not so much in the area where PNM installed it and running, but all of it seems to be in that area from the Dixon Turnoff to, to the, that's where most of the stones or boulders are coming down. Sunday night, driving back to Taos, on the southbound lane, there was a, a boulder that stopped at the guard railing, it was the size, probably a little mini group. And so, um, just kind of wondering if you could somehow address that with Representative Lasadas, but as well as, uh, the state highway department. It's, it's just getting worse and worse, and, uh, thankful for all the moisture that we've had, but, um, just want to make sure that nobody else dies on that road.
Oh, we can, so Representative Dolce, maybe you can direct us to appropriate, uh, highway department officials. Just a question, you know, one of our employees was hit by a rock. Uh, Shannon Rowland, it was actually, her vehicle was struck by a rock, she was showing you the pictures. Hit the rim, it did cause a hole into the, she missed the work yesterday to deal with that. Our former employee, uh, Nicole, uh, same, uh, storm that Commissioner Fabro saw the rocks come down.
Her car destroyed.
Her car was struck also, so, and has affected a couple of us here at Test Cabin.
I think that one of those rocks hit Highway 240, because those people hold that hit.
240 is nasty, huh?
It is.
It's rolled all the way with her.
And, and I understand that the same thing is happening on, on the road to Caniaska, just not as nature as, as it is on Highway 68.
Anything else from Mr. Avio, uh, in his report?
Very none, thank you, Mr. Avio. Next item, item 16, we have item A and C. Future meeting is for April 2019, Mr. Avio.
Very good.
Food?
Yes.
All right, the cigar's not good.
There's a pet over pizza that he has a hat from being a while back, so he just, I was tapping it up there.
I just threw that away yesterday.
What'd you say? He's not coming back. He's not going back, a buzzword floor, conservation. Next time I ask for us, could we like pet over?
Right. So, the April meetings, we'd like for the commission to consider cancelling April 2nd. The reason being is, uh, county purchased an agreement for the, the room in here. It would be, it'd take about six to seven days. And the window that this, the company has is that first week of, um, of April, but it also goes into Monday, Tuesday of the next week. So, we're going to have a brand-new system back here. The clerk side will have a new system, and, uh, the manager side will have a new system. And these will be able to control some of the items that we're running over here, jumping over valve for. We will do from our, uh, side of it, it's a lot of brand-new system. And, uh, that's why we're asking to maybe consider cancelling that meeting of the second. We thought about moving things around to have two meetings, but then, no matter what, we end up backing to, back, go back-to-back meetings, so, if you guys would consider maybe just having one meeting?
Commissioners, I enjoy not having back-to-back meetings. Consider it as one. If we can consider that the, the, uh, the March 19th meeting, correct, Mr. Avio? Is that our next meeting?
Right, March 19th.
We can put as much action items that we need to, uh, for us not to be able to have that April 2nd meeting. We can come back on the 16th and, and have, um, a light meeting, maybe, if this time of year was available. If not, we can probably put that with whatever Ms. Martinez can do for preliminary budget discussions. And we give back into the grant, the first meeting name.
So, Mr. Chairman, right now, yes, what we have for the month of March is the 19th?
Yes.
And that's it?
That's it. Yeah, just the 19th. And right now, uh, we don't have anything planning department-wise. Those hearings that I talked about, that Mr. Avio wants to do later in the month.
There was, there was mention of, of a joint meeting, I think one of the last medals that, um, the ONG put out. There was discussions with Bellis on a joint meeting with the town of Taos. Is that still going to happen anytime soon, or?
I don't see any correspondence from the town. I, I know, uh, Mr. Cordova, Mr. Bellis traded a couple of emails, but nothing was ever said.
Commissioners? What do you think of eliminating April 2nd meeting?
I'm okay, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Go ahead and move forward, Mr. Avio, with getting your, uh, April, March 19th meeting to be maybe action-packed and full, and maybe we'll have lunch a day. And we can go ahead and continue to look at the April meetings pending, or we need to prepare for preliminary budget discussions if you might.
So, so no April 2nd meeting?
For sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's not an April full? All right, uh, next item is new business to be considered at the future commission meeting. Thinking from Commissioner Field, please, taking action for the discussions. I think there's some things that Mr. Avio has to prepare for the county. I might give up majority of meetings. Meeting, pressing commissioners?
Not, not this meeting.
Yeah.
All right, we're working on, we're getting closer, all right. That is for new business to be discussed, considered for the next campaign.
Commissioners, without any other questions, commissioners?
The meeting will never end.
Maybe not.
Um, we have, I have just a, just a note, commissioners, uh, I can bring back, uh, and give you, and I have them today in Boston, I have pronounced a pending litigation. Just updates, there's nothing serious, that just gives you, uh, a snapshot of where everything pending. And I can give you those, uh, to you today, and if you have specific questions, well, you can ask me about items that we could avoid. It seems like we've put this off a couple of times because we've had such busy meetings, and the next meeting won't be any better. So might be better if I just hand those out to you.
But please don't share any information.
All of it is, all of it is pretty sanitized, but yes, it is still...
Attorney, I...
And, Mr. Chairman, uh...
Yes, sir.
With that, uh, today, I, I was a little reserved in saying anything not that I ever do during the executive session with regards to the ability of the county commission to be able to call and, and participate in the executive session. I, I wish we would set up or develop a policy, um, where that wasn't allowed. I don't think that is safe.
You make a good point that there's no security, and it could be a violation of what the meetings have by someone else listening or someone...
Recording.
Recording, so you make a very good point.
I can currently at least be here.
To that effect?
Yes, Mr. Avio.
Um, we could come up with a meeting policy of just that. And then there was also an issue that other commissioners, uh, that, uh, that we needed to, we've kind of practiced, and we've heard something twice. Or, you're in a draft, and then before we take action on it, it felt that the resolution should let the sheriff should have been an action, and at the end it should have been a discussion, I, uh... And, uh, kind of like, well, we did, in a sense, hear about it from the sheriff the previous meeting.
Right.
So, I don't know, we need to maybe consider some of that in that policy as well.
Yeah.
It's what we're going to, hear something.
We don't advertise those resolutions, correct?
No.
The only way that the public will find out about them is if they're in tune as to what goes on in commission meetings, or in Mr., in Sheriff Holgrass's case, he promoted it on Facebook.
Right.
And so, and brought in the, the people to speak on behalf of it.
Unless you know to look at the, the website, so everything that we brought up today was from the website. So if you know to look at the website, then you can...
Right.
Get all this information, other than any executive session.
So, um, this, Commissioner? This, this is something that we can take home with us, or we'll have to...
Yes.
We do it at this moment.
Any, anything else, commissioners, uh?
My stuff.
Hey, motion, uh, so, all right.
We must, must.
Motion to debate, favor?
Aye.
Chairman, you favor, uh, German?
No.
Yes, you're up. All right. Thank you all, Dean, thank you all, we appreciate it.